Hey, Q.
Hey, sir, how are you?
How's it going?
Life is good and I'm enjoying it. I just left all my budget books at the office. I didn't realize it till I get off the turnpike. It's hard to turn back.
But don't do that tomorrow night. How are you, Taylor?
Good.
Good to see you.
I was just gonna say, did I get to be first?
I think first official through the door.
Mark it down.
I know, I just put a checkbox next to your name, gold star.
Right. If I had to drive up there, I'd be late.
I hear you. Hey Valerie. Hey Penny.
You there? Okay.
So that second link worked fine.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Yeah, now, of course, the links are coming through after you sent that to me.
Oh, sure, that's all right.
Right, but still, thank you.
To do it on the fly.
Yeah.
Taylor, I like where you're at.
I know. I think that's when I was in Hawaii. Like two days ago.
That looks great. Jeremy, how are you, sir?
Doing well, how are you, Matt?
Doing fine, thank you.
Jeremy.
Yes?
Does your wife cut hair? You're so lucky.
You got money. Got your over?
Yeah, mine's growing.
My daughter has never seen my hair this long in her entire life. She's like, wow, you've got a lot of curls and waves, Dad. I'm like, yeah. How are you, Donna?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Wanted to make sure I could get on. My internet's been in and out all day.
Uh-oh.
Yeah. It's pretty calm out there now, though.
Yeah, it is.
Keep our fingers crossed.
Hello.
Hi, Chris.
Chris, you shouldn't have your chair down by the light, the park's closed.
I know, that's what I thought. Isn't the park closed? It's a great picture, though.
We're gonna have to send Chris Cutter down to move that chair. I've never been happier than when I woke up this morning and found that we didn't have three inches of snow on the ground.
That would have been so bad.
Oh, my gosh. That last one, that one to three inches, ended up with eight inches and it was mostly gone by the time we came home the next night, but I did not want another surprise like that.
No. It was beautiful on Saturday, though.
It certainly was, made it all worthwhile.
Yeah.
Yeah. We were on a Zoom meeting this morning, both Valerie Adams and I were, and one of the panelists had to move to someplace else within her house and she picked up her laptop and texted Valerie, I said, we just got a virtual tour of that home, both floors, you can see down the stairs and...
Hi, Elizabeth.
Hello.
Hey, Elizabeth.
How are you doing tonight?
Good, how's it going? Long time no see.
I like Caitlin's background, ooh.
That's beautiful.
Not really fit.
Where I want to be right now. Not in me. Although, I don't know, Hawaii's not on the news ever. How are they doing?
They were discussing
Not good.
easing their rules of social distancing. I think they're gonna be going through the month of May, is what the governor had said. I think I heard that yesterday.
I could find a way to be socially distant in Hawaii, though. I feel like...
Marcy.
Hi, Matt. Can you hear me okay?
Loud and clear.
Perfect. Great. Hi, everybody.
Can anybody see
Hi, Marcy.
Trey Ethan's name on here?
Yes.
You see it?
Has him as an attendee.
Okay. I'm getting some texts here.
If we need to refer to folks, if they're an attendee and you want us to pull them in, just let me know and we can pull them in and then and then once they're done providing info, we can then escape them from the Hollywood Squares, too.
Do you see Peter Esposito on that?
No, Jeff shed, oh, yes. I see Jeff. I'm not sure if, I don't think I see Peter on here yet.
Okay.
I hope the questions are just as fun as Hollywood Squares.
I know, I was just gonna say, Elizabeth, I think that would be fun.
I know, and you've got kind of like Jeremy is the center square, maybe, and
Right.
Caitlin's the blocker, I don't know. We'll see.
Valerie's still with us.
Still here.
Yeah.
Hey Valerie. Hey Phil.
Hey, Matt.
There's Phil.
Good, how are you doing today?
Good, thank you. Hey Jamie.
Everyone's so quiet tonight.
I think Heather is having trouble connecting or is waiting to come in. Here's Nasser.
Hello, Zin.
Oh, good, thanks.
And we have a couple of other members who are on with inactive video.
Is Dell's name on the list, Matt?
Yes, Dell is here.
All right. The administrators are all texting me, asking me if they're in, okay.
Yes, Jeff Thorick is on, Dell is here.
Nasser, I don't know the proper greeting for Ramadan, but Happy Ramadan.
Yes, that's fine, this is Ramadan Mubarak or Ramadan Kareem.
There we go, thank you.
Yes, sir. Greetings, sir.
Greetings, how you guys doing? I wanna know where's my spring, where's my summer?
We're just thankful there's no smell.
Did we lose Laura? I thought we had her.
She was, she was on. And she is not at this point in time.
I don't know if she got booted out, but I saw the little thing flash by that says she had left.
And Laura might have to tap in and out tonight. She's on parent duty a little bit, so that could be what's happening as well. She texted me that earlier today, so there she is.
She's back with us.
Matt, we can begin whenever you feel ready. It looks to me like the full council is here and I'm not sure how many members of the board will be attending this evening, so...
We're missing Kimberly.
Mm-hmm. And Hope.
Yeah, I'm texting them right now to see if they're having trouble getting in and we'll see how that goes. There's Hope.
Hi, Hope.
So I'm texting Kimberly quickly.
Matt, is Peter Esposito in now?
It's conceivable people might be trying to click on the 4/28 Zoom link, which would be, I think, was that tomorrow's? So they might be sitting there waiting for tomorrow's meeting because we were sent links for both today and tomorrow's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my advice to Chris.
To me. And me.
I was not gonna out you, Heather.
Peter is on board, Donna.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep, you're good to go. Jamie, as the chairman of the finance committee, whenever you'd like to get started, sir, I think we're good to go.
There we go, it wouldn't come off a mute. Okay, great, thank you and welcome everybody to the Monday, April 27th, 2020, meeting of Cape Elizabeth Finance Committee. Appreciate everybody coming together and hope and trust that everybody is doing well and taking good care and continuing to be well and healthy. So tonight's agenda item is presentation of the fiscal '21 budget from the school board. Before we get to that, I just wanted to make a couple of opening comments and then we'll open it up for a chance for the public to participate and comment, and then we'll get into a presentation led by School Board Finance Chair Elizabeth Seifries. I want to first just say that, you know, the work that has been done on both the school budget as well as on the municipal budget, is work that started many months ago. I think in the case of the school budget, it started towards the end of calendar year 19 and certainly on the fiscal you know, carrying, looking ahead to the next fiscal year and as the calendar turned to 2020, work picked up in earnest. And certainly on the town side, you know, similar schedule. The reason I bring all that up is obviously the world looked like a very different place when that work began than what it looks like today. So I'm appreciative of the work that the town manager has done along with his staff and the work that the superintendent and her staff and school board have done to get us to this place. I only bring, you know, that to the forefront of the discussion today as a point of emphasis around things have changed a lot. And so in the spirit of dialogue and cooperation and things like that, I hope that we'll move forward, you know, cooperatively with that in mind. The other thing I wanted to draw attention to is just our overall calendar and schedule. Without getting too far ahead of the work of the council, I know that there have been some discussions, as many are aware. The state election that was previously scheduled for June has moved to July, I believe July 14th, by order of the governor. And many communities and towns in our area and throughout the state are taking the prerogative to move their previously scheduled June municipal elections to align with that state election in July. What that means for Cape Elizabeth is the prospect of potentially moving our regularly scheduled budget referendum vote from its currently scheduled June date out to align with that July 14th date. If you were to backdate a schedule from there, for the terms of the charter, the town council needs to vote on the school budget and put that forward for the warrant 30 days prior to the referendum election taking place. So that would take us to on or about June 15th. Currently, we're scheduled for that to happen on May 11th. And as I said, I expect that action of the council will be to move that out. What that does is buys us just a little bit more time, not a tremendous amount of time, but hopefully an amount of time that will yield further concrete information. You know, in a world where today we have a lot of unknowns and a lot of uncertainties, even if in just 30 to 40 days or so extra, we may find that we have more information available to us than what we have today. And again, provide a little bit more time for dialogue back and forth, both amongst the council as well as staff and members of the school board. So we also have tomorrow evening scheduled earmarked date for follow-on discussion to tonight's discussion. So in past years, that's been earmarked and not necessarily often used. I I'm anticipating the likelihood of needing to have further discussion tomorrow and let folks know that that's likely to be the case. The town council also has a special meeting of its own scheduled beginning at 6 o'clock prior to that scheduled workshop tomorrow to take up some other business actions related to the COVID-19 emergency. We currently have hearings scheduled for Monday, May 4th. Again, subject to some change and tinkering based on the overall budget schedule, but if that public hearing holds, it's still in effect for the municipal budget, it will take place then. And potential municipal budget vote still holding on Monday, the 11th. So I'll pause for just a second to see if there's any questions from council or the school board or staff relating to any of that. And Matt, you'll have to help me if you see hands raised because I don't have that view up.
Yes, sir.
There we go. Now I do. So anybody from the council or school board that just has any questions about what I just laid out? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So before we get going to the presentation, now's the time of the meeting and there will be an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well for the public to comment on items on the agenda. So again, our lone item is this presentation of the fiscal '21 school budget. So if you are joining us either online or on the phone and wish to offer any comment or public statement, you're welcome to do so now. Please just identify yourself, give us your address and/or affiliation. And please limit your comments to approximately three minutes. The public comment period is scheduled for 15 minutes and if the council decides, we can extend that if need be. I will do my best to keep time and try and give a little bit of a signal for folks to let them know that their time is up, but if you could keep an eye on that yourself, so that would help us to move along. So with that, if there are any members of the public that wish to speak, please use the raise hand function in the participant box. Or the, if you're dialed, I don't know if we have anybody dialed in by phone, it doesn't look like it. So just the raise hand function. I'm seeing Mary Ann Lynch, that's the first one with her hand raised. Go ahead, Mary Ann. Matt will get you unmuted in just a second. There you go.
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Okay, great. First of all, I want to thank all of you. I know that this budget process began in a time when the economy was high-flying, record stock market, record unemployment, and I appreciate that the, our entire economic situation has taken a 180-degree turn just at the end of your budget process. So I really do, my heart goes out to you. I've served in, on the council and I have to say that I have never served in as extraordinary a time as you are all serving. So I will just speak to one issue tonight. I worked intimately with the appropriations committee for eight years on the state budget process. And I, including through the last downturn of the economy. This is in every way shaping up to be far worse and I fully expect that revenue sharing and general purpose aid to education will have to be cut. The largest portions of the state revenue are sales and income tax. And I fully expect that by later this year, the legislature will come in and amend the budget and cut the general purpose aid and the revenue sharing significantly. So I would request that your budgets be flat-funded and that you have a budget that reflects the great likelihood that we are going to be looking at significant cuts in state aid and also the great likelihood that many in our community are unemployed, underemployed, and their businesses are threatened. So with that, I thank you very much. And I don't think I identified that I live at too old Colony Lane. Thank you.
I was gonna ask, thank you very much. Next person with their hand raised is Jessica Sullivan. Jessica, give Matt a second to unmute you and... Go ahead. Jessica, are you there? You might have to unmute yourself on your end. Hey Jessica, are you there?
Looks like she's dropped off, Jamie.
Okay. We'll see if she joins back in. Is there anybody else from the public that wishes to comment at this time? I see Susanna Hubbs' hand raised. Susanna, go ahead.
Hi.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm Susanna Michelle Hubbs. I live at 18 Bellfield Road. Hello, everybody, and thank you so much for being here tonight in these really strange circumstances, for doing all the work you have been doing in this crazy time. I sent an email earlier, not that long ago, and I just wanted to have my, have my voice heard in that. I want to thank the school board and the administrators, Donna, for all the hard work they've done to create a budget that I think is very responsible and very sensitive to the current situation. I think that I was very encouraged to see some new additions of custodians being on the building committee. You know, that is something that we've talked about having been cut in the years. And even though we don't know which direction we're headed yet, building-wise, we greatly need the custodians to take care of what we have for now. But basically, I want to just say that I hope that the budget, the school budget is approved by the town council. I, we owe it to our students and we owe it to our town to have this one thing that I consider one of our greatest assets, to be a constant in our town. Not to change despite the circumstances. And it's still very sensitive to the climate. It's not irresponsible, it's sensitive, and I encourage you to maintain stability on this front. Thank you all so much for what you do.
Thank you, Susanna. I see that Jessica's rejoined, so I'm gonna go back to her. So Matt, if you can tee her up again. Just a second, Jessica.
Somebody's having a problem unmuting her.
No, wait a second, go ahead.
Jessica, I'm not sure if yours is muting on your end as well.
Okay.
Oh, I think we got you.
Good to go.
There you go.
Thanks.
Thank you for your patience.
Well, thank you. I just wanted to say, first of all, I want to say good evening, thank you all for your service to the town. I know this is a workshop and you won't be voting, but I I want to urge you to support flat budgets for next year. That is no increase from last year's budgets for either municipal or the school department. I know that you, the council's received a chart today that was put together by Bill Downs, who is a financial analyst here in Cape. It shows the relationship with the school budget and school enrollment since 2006, when we had a peak enrollment of 1,847 students. If the school department predictions are correct, we're gonna lose 23 students this coming fall, making a decline of 295 students since 2006. I find the school budget frustrating because it wants to increase by nearly 6%, add new staff, 13 staff, while we're still losing students. I just want to say that I don't think this is the time to raise property taxes for either the municipal or school department, especially when we're facing another drop in school enrollment. All Cape residents are feeling the devastating effects of the global financial and public health crises. The virus is expected to surge again in the fall, so we're gonna be in this frightening situation for quite some time. You know, as counselors, you represent all the residents and taxpayers of Cape Elizabeth. I hope we can all, let's just say, let's hope for the best, but please plan for the worst and please don't raise our property taxes in this crazy time. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jessica, just, could you give us your address?
Sorry, yeah, I live at 441 Mitchell Road.
Thank you so much. Next up, I see Kathy Ray with her hand raised. So Matt, if you could cue her up just a second, Kathy?
You're live, Kathy.
Hi. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name's Kathy Ray. I live at 532 Spurwink Avenue. I was on the school board for eight years, including two years as chair. I was on the town council for six years, including one year as chair. So I'm very familiar with all the budgets that you're working on. And I thank you for your service. It can be a very hard thing to do. What I wanted to bring up was class size. And back in 2017, the school board changed class size and they reduced it, which supported higher staffing levels, which increased the school budget and decreased the amount of general purpose aid that Cape Elizabeth received from the state. So I want you to keep that in mind as you're making your decision about the school budget. I would also like to see you fund both a flat budget for the schools and the municipality. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Next up is Rosemary Townsend. Rosemary, give Matt just a second to queue you up and. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Rosemary Townsend at Seven Fieldstone Road. I also support a flat budget for this year, just on my own street of eight houses. There's one family that their income is down low enough now that they qualify for free food. My next door neighbor is a small business. And they're down to one client in a consulting firm. So it's very, very real. And Maine is noted to be one of the most effective states in terms of the economic hit because of the tourism. And, you know, because of the economic situation, the tourism and the job quality that we have here. So I think it's very, very important to be very, very careful with what we do with the school budget. And also, since we don't know anything about sports and how and if they can continue, I did notice that one of the things was an assistant for the sports director. And I think that's something we should reconsider because why are we adding something to something we may never even do this year? But in any case, I thank you because I know your hard work was done when everything was high and going really well. And now it's just absolutely tanked. So I appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person with their hand raised is Jim Walsh. Jim, give Matt just a second. Did we lose Jim?
Nope, he's, just a moment. There you go.
There you go, Jim.
Good. Thank you very much, everybody. Again, I mirror everyone else's opinion about the good work that all of you have done over the last several months, lots of time and energy and effort. I think it's interesting that you have a lot of folks who have stepped up to talk with you this evening, who have vested their own personal time over the past few years in making Cape Elizabeth a great place to live. I speak to you tonight because I have lost my job at L L B in after 13 years. So the lens that I now view, everything that Kathy and I do is very different. And I speak to you from the heart. As you view what it is you're about to consider, I would suggest you have to roll it back and you have to look at the reality of what we're currently in the middle of. With all of the unknowns that are on the table, it is absolutely essential that we take a good look at what we've proposed and what we can or cannot do. Come up with a process that will develop the best answer for all of the Cape Elizabeth residents, not just one group versus another. At the end of the day, I have a lot of time on my hands now. And as I said in my email to you earlier today, more than happy to participate in whatever group you might put together to take a look at the two proposed budgets and determine what can be either eliminated, delayed, or in some way funded some other process. I have absolutely no confidence that we're going to get the kind of aid out of the state that I think we've assumed in these two budgets. In my early town council time, I never had to deal with what you folks are dealing with today. We did have LePage zero out funding for towns and schools. We did have 9/11 that basically threw everybody for a loop, but nothing like what you folks have on the table today. And the biggest issue that you have to contend with is that you need to be making assumptions about what you think it's going to be or what it could be. And all I would ask you to do is vested townspeople who have put the time and energy and effort into making this a great place to live, that you continue to do that and that you take a second look at what you have come up with. While it's all great work, a lot of good assumptions, as the school department indicated cautious and conservative, guided by goals and objectives. All of that's well and good. But what we've experienced in the last seven weeks, no one ever could have anticipated. So I ask you, take a good, hard look at what you've done. And I, as one who has more time on my hands now than ever, I'm willing to help. And I'm sure there are lots of other citizens in this community that are willing to step up and help solve this issue. Thank you for your service to the town. I appreciate you giving me the chance to talk.
Thanks, Jim. We're at about 15 minutes of public comment now. I don't see anybody else with their hand raised. Is there anybody else? I see Nancy Thompson. Is there anybody else? If you are interested in speaking, if you could raise your hand now so we can have just a sense of how many people we might be looking to extend for here, if we do that. I see Nancy, is there anybody else? Okay, unless there's objection from the council, welcome Nancy's comment and then we'll move on to the agenda. So Nancy, your mic is open, go ahead.
Pine Ridge Road, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes. Oh, perfect. I'm calling as a small business owner and obviously a huge supporter of the Cape Elizabeth schools for the past 35 years. Just going to reiterate a couple of other things that Rosemary had said that, you know, we all know that small business is the engine of the main economy along with our tourism. And without those important income taxes and sales taxes that these entities produce, the state of Maine will take a long time to come back. And you know that and I know that. This will require our school board and our town council to take a careful approach to getting our budget for 2021 right-sized. Locally, as we all know, we have a lot of professionals in this town, doctors, lawyers, business owners with high-end salaries, whose revenues are all off due to closing their offices. They're not generating any income to see clients or patients are not able to do surgeries, et cetera, just like Jim talked about. We also can't forget about the retired senior citizens who will receive little or no increase in their social security and their retirement income and possibly a reduction in the future. We also have a lot of people who've lost their job or have been asked to cut their hours or been furloughed who can't pay their property and their excise taxes now. This ripple effect hits us locally by taking in less property taxes and excise taxes and puts a strain on our budget. I hope you can all lead us in the right direction and make the tough decisions to help our town to continue to work moving forward with the One Town Concept, which, as you well know, is when the town council and the school board work closely and cooperate in the best interest of all of our citizens. You have the responsibility as our leaders to take the initiative right now to help us all during these difficult times. And as someone once said, a leader takes people where they want to go. Great leaders take people where they don't necessarily want to go, but ought to be. Thank you all for your time, efforts, and countless hours of volunteering to benefit our town.
Thank you, Nancy. If there's no further comment at this time, and I'm not seeing any hands raised, I'll remind everybody that we will have opportunity for comment at the end of the meeting. Is there? Last call for any public comment for right now, though. Okay, seeing none. As I said at the outset, pleased to have the school board here to participate with us. And I know that Elizabeth Seifries, their finance chair, has prepared a presentation to walk us through. So with no further ado, I will turn it over to you, Elizabeth.
Thanks, Jamie. In a minute, I'm going to ask town manager Matt Sturgis to share his screen with you so you can see my presentation. This is sort of the funny way we have to do this. And I have to say that I miss sitting with you all. There's a different energy when we're all together in town chambers, and I miss that. First of all, I'd like to thank all the citizens that have emailed and made phone calls and otherwise made their thoughts known. I appreciate everybody getting involved and giving input. And I think that's the best way for this One Town Concept work, that we all work together. What I would beg people to do is to stay engaged and strive to have factual information. I also would like to thank all of our educators, not just on the budget side of things, but I'd like to just take this moment to thank them for their enormous pivot for their incredibly increased work and for everything that they're doing to support our students in this extraordinary time. I'd like to thank the administrators in the Cape Elizabeth School Department also for their incredibly difficult work right now, but also for their budget work, which began probably in November or December of 2019. They review everything. They, they look at every single program. We don't believe in just rolling things over. We believe in reviewing everything to make sure that we are getting the maximum amount of benefit out of, you know, every nickel spent. I'd like to thank my fellow school board members for weeks and weeks and weeks of work and meetings and conversation about this budget. Everybody has been incredibly sensitive and thoughtful, but at the same time, quite rigorous. And so I thank you. I also thank superintendent Donna Wolfram for guiding us through this process, for steering the administrative ship and for, for taking a very conservative approach to all this. We appreciate you very much, Donna. Getting close to the end of my thank yous, I need to thank the finance director of the town of Cape Elizabeth, John Q. It has been a pleasure to work with you. I'm so glad that you are a part of this town government now. And I feel like, you know, you're helping keep this ship in the right direction as well. Marcy Weeks, our new business manager, couldn't, no one could do this without you. We appreciate your work and feel so grateful that you're here. And then finally, I would like to thank the entire town council and specifically the current and past members of the finance subcommittee. Our work together, our communication, our collaboration has just been tremendous. I think that we are in a fantastic position to work collaboratively and we have been for the last two years. It's, it's been excellent, so thank you. I just want to give a quick shout out to Chris Straw, who was on finance subcommittee, to Valerie, I'm gonna, I'm trying not to say your, your maiden name, Valerie Adams, to Jamie Garvin, and to former school board chair, Susanna Mizell-Hubbs, and current school board chair, Heather Altenberg, and to Matthew Sturgis, thank you. The finance subcommittee is probably the most relevant and useful meeting I attend every month. So thank you. Onto the presentation, here we go. So we're going to move to the first quote.
There we go, thank you.
Thank you. So why are we here? Why do we do this? Benjamin Franklin said, "An investment in knowledge pays the best interest." And our second president of the United States, John Adams, said, "Liberty cannot be preserved without a general knowledge among the people." "High-quality public education is essential to democracy and the future of humanity, is a resource for all and a down payment on the future." So what I'm going to do tonight, we've, we've sort of begun, I'm going to walk the, the town council through our process. Because what I believe is that the town council really wants to be able to validate that the school board has had a rigorous, repeatable, and transparent process. So it'll be fairly similar to last year's presentation with relevant updates. First of all, we have pre-develop, yeah, pre-budget development work. We had year-round finance subcommittee meetings, which I referred to earlier. And although it seems like it was so long ago, just this past fall, the needs assessment was completed and that report was delivered to the school board. The building committee was formed based on that report and the building committee began work. Monthly budget updates from the business manager, our new business manager gives us incredibly concise and useful budget updates every month. And then we have four, basically because of our superintendent and our new business manager, we have constant intense study and seeking of revenues and savings. Some examples of that are the SRRF project fund, the reimbursement for out-of-district students and state-funded bus purchase. And quickly, if Marcy would be willing to just talk about those a little bit, how they were, they're found money.
Oh, yes, thanks, Elizabeth. So we have had a lucky year. Our SRRF funds, our school revolving renovation funds were awarded by the state. We were awarded six projects. And the total amount of all six awards came to $390,429. And the great part about this is that it's a 30% forgiveness of this amount, which comes to $117,129 as a grant. And the remaining amount is 0% financing over five years. So it's a great way for us to be able to get those projects for the buildings. And the second item that Elizabeth talked about, the bus award grant, is basically we were given money to purchase a bus this, in this new year. And we will be going through the process of getting the specifications of the bus. And the award money will be given to us through our state funds and will be reimbursed completely to purchase a new bus. And then the third item that you mentioned, Elizabeth, was. Oh, can you, Nasser, what was that? Okay, the third item was the subsidizable educational cost for reimbursing us for some of our students that we have that are out-of-district students that come from other districts that receive higher amount of subsidy. So we were given by the state, $75,675.72 for these students. And this, this money will be in our final check in June. So we will get this money for this fiscal year.
Thanks, Marcy. And the reason I bring this up is all. Thanks Marcy, and the reason I bring this up is all of this is not just sort of given to us as if a fairy sprinkle that these had, all these things had to be sought out and researched and deliberately gone after. The superintendent became aware that the first time in my memory, I don't know the last time that the state opened the SRRF, but she became aware back around the Fourth of July, and because we were in the process of completing our needs assessment, we were able to make those applications. In the same way, our business manager has been just scouring everything having to do with school funding and looking for anything. It's sort of akin to shaking the trees and lifting up the sofa cushions. Every single nickel that could be available for Cape Elizabeth, it seems like Marcy Weeks has been going after. So we appreciate that in our pre-budget development work.
A comment?
Oh. Did someone have something to say?
Quick comment. I just wanted to commend you guys on this particular component of the budget. One of the areas that I've seen in need of improvement over the last few years was I wanted to see that the district was going and seeking out revenue from as many possible sources as they could before they started going to the taxpayers. And from my perspective, I feel like we've made significant strides as demonstrated with these categories, so I just want to commend you on this one component because that's what I had been looking for, is try to get revenue from other sources before coming to the taxpayers, and this is one of those components, so thank you.
Thank you, Chris. I couldn't agree more, and it's really been due to the leadership of the superintendent and our new business manager. The board could not be more pleased. So the last part of pre-budget development work was our yearly audit of school finances done by RKO. I believe that the town council is aware of the outcome of that, and we can say that the skinnier the folder you receive, the better the news, and our, you know, our bound portfolio was very skinny this year, so that felt great. And again, thank you to RKO and to John Q. and Marcy for that. So to the next slide.
Just a moment, Madam Chair. Sorry about that.
Thank you.
It went to sleep on me, sorry.
Also, this year, we had negotiations with two of our major bargaining units, the largest group being the Teachers Union, and that was just completed as of last week. We completed negotiations and approved the contract for the administrators earlier this year. I can give you a few of the details of the completed and approved contract in that the administrators group agreed to a three-year contract with modest salary increases, and we also were able to implement a new health insurance cost-saving mechanism where we are incentivizing them to choose to find their health insurance elsewhere, so that we are not paying for their health insurance. And that was very popular on the school board side and popular with the administrators. Because the teacher's contract has not been ratified by the association or approved by the school board, we can't talk about it yet. But those were two major budget items, so we're happy to have those in the rearview mirror for now. So, moving on. At the beginning of every single budget meeting, I had quite a spiel. Some people may have watched and heard it, but I'm going to read our fiscal year 21 budget goals, because we felt this was part of having our rigorous, repeatable, and transparent process is holding up our budget goals to every decision we made. So, maintain and improve the high quality of education for every student. Careful examination of line items and consideration of the success and effectiveness of the expenditures in order to provide a fiscally responsible budget. Support the 2020 through 2025 strategic plan goals and clear and continual communication throughout the budget process. So, we did refer to goals in our goals. What I can tell you, and most of you may remember this, that our strategic plan is a highlight of our community and school department priorities for the next five years. Our current strategic plan goals were adopted in the fall of 2019 following a community forum of over 100 people. And that was a wide spectrum of participants. We had, we had community members from all walks of life. We had parents, we had faculty, we had staff, students, administrators, board members. It was just a very, very wide group of people. The thoughts and aspirations and concerns from that large gathering were distilled into these goals, which you see in front of you. Health and well-being, global competency, multiple pathways and definitions of success, safe, sustainable, and effective facilities, and environmental responsibility. So it seems like years ago, but it was just months ago in January 2020, we began our budget workshops. We had five planned budget workshops, and we wound up with seven actual workshops. But at our very first budget workshop, all building principals and department heads presented based on their original request budget. And I'm going to refer at this time quickly to just I'm going to look at the cost center review for the Cape Elizabeth Middle School. It was one of the documents that was shared ahead of time. Just to, so that you have an understanding of what was presented to the board. So you can see, at the Cape Elizabeth Middle School, there's a breakdown of the student population. Next year, the middle school is expected to have fewer students. And so below that, you will see in their staffing for next year, they have reduced their staffing by one teacher. And then on the other side, you can see that there are needs addressed in this budget, and then there are needs that are not addressed. This is the original cost center review, and you can see it has the date of January 14th, 2020. Not necessarily everything from everybody's original request budget cost center review is supported in the final budget, but this is the starting point. You can also look at the Cape Elizabeth Special Education Department Cost Center Review, and you can be, I would say, about 100% sure that everything on the special education cost center review has to be supported and mandated by law, so that you can see exactly who makes up the special ed department. And later, we can talk about the fact that they also have facilities needs that are unaddressed. So we had those cost center reviews showing enrollments, staffing needs, needs not met, needs addressed, that sort of thing. And at the end of that presentation, I asked for the school board and the public to please submit questions based on that original request budget. And those questions were compiled and shared with the school board, the town council. They were shared out to administrators so that they could research their answers and get them out to all of us, and they are also posted online.
Can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
So with respect to the Cape Elizabeth High School's cost center review, I just really, really, really wanted to commend you for this particular document. Much, one of my primary focuses of critique over the last couple of years has been, I've wanted to see constant improvement. I said, "A room's not built today." I want to see constant improvement in the process in review of things that I deemed kind of necessary for review. And this document is the first time, to my knowledge, the information that was truly needed to make an informed decision, as me as a voter on the school budget. But for everyone involved, this document, the high school cost center review document, specifically the last few pages, was the first time I've ever seen this information, which is what I'd always wanted to see, which allows me to make an informed decision with respect to a lot of, a number of these issues. So I just really wanted to commend you for this document. And just as a voter, a general voter in town, I would love to see this similar document every single year. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. I also agree with you. I strive to improve our process every year, and my thanks go out to high school principal Jeff Shedd, who prepared that high school cost center review, and we have that similar information for our Poncove and Middle School, so my wish, although I will not be finance chair forever, and you can bet on that, is that this process will be documented, and as I keep saying, I want it to be rigorous and repeatable. And so that, you know, when we've made these improvements, that we will continue to do that, so thank you. We're going to move on to revenue now. So, this year, our state estimate shows an increase of $36,350. That is good news. However, we are still trying to recover from three consecutive years of cumulative revenue cuts. So it was a cumulative cut of $2,156,000 between fiscal year 17, 18, and 19. In fiscal year 20, which was this current year's budget, we did receive a $407,000 increase, which really still puts us about 1.8 million in the hole. So we are still recovering from this. I'm going to, if people have the State Education Subsidy General Purpose Aid chart that was shared, it has these green bars on it. It helps give you a sense of where we have been and where we are. The 2021 number is not on there because these are actuals. And as we are all well aware, we don't know exactly yet what our actual will be, but we do have our estimate. So moving on. And the reason I dropped revenues into this part is I'm trying to give the town council sort of a linear view of how we receive information as well. We actually start the budget well before we ever know what our revenues will be. And so we feel like we have to be very thoughtful and careful with trying to develop expenditures without knowing what state aid will be. So state aid comes in in February, and then we kind of keep going with our process. So one of the unknowns is known now in our process. In February of 2020, we also wanted to repeat another, what we found to be an important understanding of developing our budget, which is understanding the essential programs and services and the ED279 state aid estimate. And it's, I, just myself, and I think the business administrator and the superintendent, we all agree that just because we feel that it's necessary to fund above EPS, we can't just simply disregard EPS. We need to understand it and maximize what we can get out of it. So our business administrator prepared a document for all of us, which is shared with you that talks about what the ED279 is and when it is released. Essentially, it is the one piece of data that we are interested in every year, and it's right around the, it's the adjusted state contribution. So the full ED279 is a large document I did share with you, and if you are interested, you're welcome to go through it. It has, you know, multiple different categories and levers. But in the end, what we really need to focus in on is Section 5, which is where we find our state subsidy. What happens is that the total amount is calculated, and then the state has a way of trying, you know, assuming what each town can afford to raise towards that subsidy, and that's why, you know, their total calculation has a subtraction, and then whatever is left is what our subsidy winds up being. So kind of long-winded, you're welcome to read that document, but that is why this, for this upcoming fiscal year, we are estimated to receive $36,321 more. Taking a look at teacher, teaching staff comparisons and essential programs and services, we wanted to look at other towns. Are we the only town that funds above EPS? What are, you know, what are the comparisons in our own neighborhood and then statewide? So there's a chart that looks like this. It says Teaching Staff Comparisons FY21. And if you look at it, you'll see that Yarmouth is about 14% over EPS. South Portland is about 14% over EPS. Scarborough is at 19% over EPS. RSU 51, which is Cumberland and North Yarmouth, are 28% over EPS. Falmouth is 28% above EPS, and Cape Elizabeth is pretty closely tied, it looks like, with Scarborough at about 20%. So that's sort of, it was a snapshot about what do our neighbors do in a lot of the schools that we are typically compared with. And then another study, we looked at EPS calculations, and it's difficult to look at elementary and middle school because different schools have different grades, but we can get a good snapshot at the high school level because that's something that's standard pretty much throughout the state. What we did find out is that EPS calculates funding based on high school student rate, high school to student teacher ratio of about 16, and this is in a documented study. Actual student-to-teacher ratio for all of Maine high schools is 14.6. 78% of all Maine high schools are below the EPS student-to-teacher ratio, meaning they fund above EPS as we do. And the average actual student-to-teacher ratio in Maine's low-poverty, high-performing schools is 13.1. So low-poverty, high-performing, those are similar school departments to ours. Cape Elizabeth High School's student-to-teacher ratio is 13.5, which exceeds the statewide average for comparable schools. So, we, you know, we had a pretty in-depth EPS conversation, and then at that meeting, we also started having written answers distributed from all the questions earlier submitted. So those questions were delivered, I mean, those answers were delivered at the workshops. They were also posted online. This was a recurring part of every subsequent workshop until we had worked through all the answers and any new questions that we received. And I think it can help the town council and the community understand that the school board does not just rubber stamp whatever is presented with us. I feel like we are, we put people through the grinder a little bit, so let's, we're going to take a look at the Poncove School 2020 to 2021 Budget Questions and Answers. And one of the positions that the Poncove principal had requested in his original request budget was a guidance counselor. So currently, there's one guidance counselor at Poncove. And in his proposal, he is asking for a second guidance counselor. So there were several questions about why do we need another full-time guidance counselor? What are the state standards around this? What does EPS expect of us? There was a lot of skepticism around adding that position. And what we found from asking those questions is that we have one guidance counselor serving well over 500 students, and Falmouth Elementary School has 1 to 286. And Brown School in South Portland has 1 to 250. Dyer School in South Portland has 1 to 238. And on and on. I think you can look at these charts and see where I'm going. We are very far outside our peer group, and we are not within range of even what EPS expects. EPS supports us having two guidance counselors. So that was, that was interesting for us to learn. But at the same time, there was also a position asked for called a permanent substitute, and there was, there was a lot of questioning around that. We wanted to know We wanted to know, you know, why, you know, what other local school departments have a permanent substitute? Is it tied to just one school? What is the cost of this? And, and, you know, you know, what would this permanent substitute do on days when no teacher is absent? And the, the questioning around this was really rigorous. And the outcome, I think, showed that, that having, having this questioning helps the administrators think and rethink and scrutinize their own budgets. Because before the school board asked for any revisions to be brought back, that particular position was pulled out of the budget. Um, I'm going to, we can take another peek at another, just a quick look at questions and answers for the Director of Teaching and Learning. There were a lot of questions around our English learner population. We have had a growing English learner population. And so we wanted to, to make sure that we had an adequate understanding of our current and incoming English learner needs. Because over this past school year, we, we had to increase the teaching staff supporting English learners. And we want to make sure that we have the best understanding that we can about those incoming students. So there's a pretty lengthy answer. This is in the FY twenty one school board budget questions for Kathy Stankard. And essentially, you know, that she feels that we have an adequate understanding of the needs of, of these students that we have. But, you know, incoming students is somewhat of a question mark every year. But those are students that we are, you know, I like to say this, we're mandated to serve them, but we, you know, you want to do it because it's the right thing to do and because you have to do it. So those are a couple of responses. We had a, a quick look at the high school questions and answers. And we wanted to remind people that we cut or absorbed positions last year because we expected roughly five hundred and eleven students at the high school. And we actually had closer to five thirty or five forty, which means that there are several classes that are really above school board guidelines. And they had to bring desks in. They're really crowded. And so we really wanted to kind of scrutinize why we're adding partial positions. And we aren't adding thirteen positions. I'd like to dispel that myth. But we are adding, you know, a point seven five science teacher and a, and, you know, point four French teacher, things like that. The expectation is that we will be up eight point seven percent in enrollment at the high school next year. And the increase in staff is roughly eight percent. So you can look at the questions and answers for the high school and anybody else that you want to look at. So we'll move on. Next, we talked about staffing and enrollment at our March third, twenty twenty workshop. Knowing that staffing and enrollment is the major budget driver in all school departments, it's not something to be shied away from. It's something to be examined under a very bright spotlight. About eighty four percent of our budget is related to staffing costs. And just recently, I think this afternoon, we had the most up-to-date pie chart that you can see. It is roughly eighty four percent is costs associated with staffing. So we had to stop and think to ourselves, why do we staff our schools the way we do? Essentially, it comes down to the needs of students primarily. The number of students and the distribution of students. So number one, we have policy. And I will, we do have the school board policy in here. I will also note another myth I'd like to dispel. The school board revisited, and it's stamped right on the school board policy, revisited the class size policy last time, December eighth in twenty fifteen. I was on the board at that time. There were no changes made. And there is, uh, what, what we did change was range instead of hard numbers. So we have policy that guides us in class size and in teacher load. Because in the middle school and the high school, there is a, there, you really need to look at teacher load because it's not, you, those teachers aren't just seeing one group for the entire day. They may have a, you know, classes of varying sizes, but the, the teacher load is really what is essential to be paying attention to for them. So we have our class size and teacher load policy that helps us determine our class sizes. And then we have to think about our student to regular ed teacher ratios and the range of our local and northern New England peers. So we have some research on that in a document shared. So if you look at the supplemental fact sheet to Cape Elizabeth High School Cost Center summary, and you jump down, so our student to teacher ratio is on par with nearby comparison schools and higher than many high performing schools. And our current student to teacher ratio was thirteen point five, as I noted earlier. Now, I'd like to, I, I think people kind of have a misunderstanding about that because thirteen point five does not mean that that is, you know, most of your classes. Not at all. Many of these classes are, you know, well over twenty students. But if you look below, because we need to just, we, we can't just look at our neighbors, we need to look around. If you look into Massachusetts, Maine, and New Hampshire at their different class size ratios, and these are for essentially comparable schools, you can see that we do not fall in the low range. We, we fall on the higher side. So our average student load per teacher is about eighty four students. And if most teachers teach five classes, five times eighteen point six is how you get to eighty four students. This compares to the school board guideline of seventy five to ninety students for teacher load. So we don't have to go through this. I think this is the document that Chris Straw is most excited about. I'm excited about it too. We're partners in this. It shows the class size and student load of all teachers at the high school. And the reason I wanted to make note of this is the reason why the school board is supporting adding a point seven five math, science teacher and a couple of other part-time positions. If you, if you just scan through, you will see that there are several math classes that are in the mid to upper twenties, approaching thirty. You have some science teachers that are in the mid twenties to upper twenties. And these, you know, these are classes that have to have labs. We have limited seating and safety concerns when you get classes over a certain number. So. And I think Matt, maybe behind me, we're on policy enrollment and there we are. So we, when talking about staffing, it's not just the numbers. If it was just as easy as taking, taking the full number and dividing it by a certain number of classrooms and then putting the students in there, I think all principals' jobs would be so much easier. But that is really not the case at all. Staffing is driven by needs. And how do we define needs? So we're going to move on to mandates and goals. Mandates are laws that require programs and services for students. Many or most of them are unfunded. Mandates have increased over the years. So I think we've often heard this conversation. If our enrollment is gently declining over the years, you know, why do we have more teachers? Why, why do we have the, the, the number of staff kind of creeping up? And I shared this with the town council last year. It is still as relevant as ever. And it is a linear timeline. I can't even get the whole thing in. It starts in nineteen hundred and it goes all the way through the two thousands. And this is just federal mandates. This is, this is not local mandate. So a lot of these mandated mandates are unfunded and they are all required. A lot of us remember when the race to the top came online. We remember when Common Core came in. We remember when STEM programs were first coming online. But now we also have anti-harassment programs. We have internet safety. We have texting and social media education. We have child trafficking education. We have marijuana safety, cyberbullying, opiate addiction. We have all these different mandates and all these different things that need to, and these are, a lot of these are regular ed. So they need to be pushed into classrooms, regular ed across the board. And they are not coming from, you know, special ed or that sort of thing. These are, these are, you know, school-wide, that these are programs that have to be staffed, developed, and taught. So it's, and they're ever-increasing. You know, the list goes on and it gets added to every single year, the different mandates. At the same time, we have, so we have the special ed requirements, which we absolutely must fund by law. No, you know, it doesn't matter if there's a pandemic or not, these needs have to be met. And we also have RTI, which I don't know that everybody understands, but it's called response to intervention, which is for essentially regular ed students who aren't accessing, who aren't able to or not supposed to access special ed. They, but they're struggling. And so there are different tiers or levels of support and intervention that are put in for these students to help them meet their goals and succeed. And the, that mandate for RTI, again, it's one of those things that I, you know, we have to do, but it's the right thing to do. We don't want to leave students behind. That takes staffing, that takes programming, and that also takes space. At the, we can also say that we have a gifted and talented program, which, you know, kind of services students on the other end of that spectrum. Again, it takes staffing, it takes space. So we, you know, we have to be able to serve all our students. Then we also have a community history and continued expectation of high performing schools. Year after year after year, our citizens have overwhelmingly supported our schools. And when you talk to incoming, well, not necessarily incoming families, but I've talked to real estate agents and asked them about, you know, what are the things that people are saying when they move to Cape Elizabeth? And the number one attribute they mention is the high performing schools. They move here for the schools. So, and that was reiterated in our future search. I would say that no one said, I'd like mediocre schools. And no one ever says, let's be less successful. And we do have a rich history. We have been named the U.S. Department of Education Blue Ribbon High School on multiple occasions. We've been named the top STEM high school in Maine among traditional high schools. Obviously, the STEM school up north got number one for all schools, but we were number one for traditional schools. We've had numerous music awards for our school department, including this year. And we've had numerous athletic championships that this community is incredibly proud of. Another topic is the undesignated or unassigned fund balance. On March eleventh, twenty twenty, we talked about the unassigned fund balance. So what is that? At the end of our fiscal year, anything that is left over, any project that came in under budget, any teacher that we hired at a lower pay grade replacing a teacher at a higher pay grade, anything like that. Anything left over that we didn't spend out of contingency, that gets moved into unassigned funds. How is it used? So I think in the past, there has been some confusion about the unassigned fund balance because, and Matt can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that the town side also has a similar fund that is able to be accessed throughout the year. However, on the school side, the unassigned fund balance may only be accessed once. We may, in our budget development, use funds from the unassigned fund balance. And we may move them into our revenues to help lower the tax burden. We may not access it any other time during the school year. It's not a contingency fund. We can't reach into it. And if you look at the, this is my favorite spreadsheet. I'll be coming back to it multiple times. It should be your favorite too, everybody. It's called Budget Tax Implications FY twenty one spreadsheet. This shows the history of, well, a lot of things. But we're going to be looking at the use of unassigned fund balance. So going back to the twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen school year, you can see that at that time, we were, we used four hundred and fifty thousand dollars of the unassigned fund balance to try to lower the tax impact. If you look at the, and, and you can, and you're going to see why. If you look up, you'll see something in red, the negative seven hundred thirty thousand dollars in state revenues. In the next school year, the next budget year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, you'll see that we use three hundred fifty thousand dollars, or we use eight hundred thousand dollars rather of unassigned funds because we received about a half a million state aid reduction. The next year, it was clear that our unassigned fund balance was starting to go down. We had another state reduction in funds, eight hundred ninety nine thousand. We used four hundred thousand of unassigned funds. So we had a pretty healthy unassigned fund balance. And we're doing our best to use it to lower tax impact for those years. And then going into the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty budget year, it became clear that we needed to, as hard as it was, we needed to try to start building our fund balance back up. We used three hundred thousand last year. And we will be using four hundred thousand this year. But the conversation is really about what are the recommendations around the amount of the unassigned fund balance? Because it is incredibly dangerous to let it get too low. Then we won't have what we need to really help out in support of our budget and lower the tax impact for our neighbors. So we talked about this during our budget audit. We talked about this again during our March eleventh budget workshop. And the, the general wisdom is anywhere from one to two percent of your operating budget is a, a good goal for your fund balance. And it is capped at three percent by the state. And if I step out of line, I want John Q or Marcy to step in and say, no, you're wrong. But I believe that if a school department goes over three percent, you get in big trouble. I don't know if you have to spend it down or if you get penalized, but I know it's not good. So at our March eleventh meeting, we talked about, we made a goal for replenishment. We, we don't want to overuse the unassigned funds in an irresponsible way. We want to make sure that we are keeping it at a healthy level and have it there to move over into our budget in small increments as needed. So that was a lot of our conversation at the March eleventh business meeting. We had further answers to budget questions. And then we had some deliberations. And at that time, the, the original request budget did not seem like it was the right budget to bring forward to the town council. And so the school board asked the superintendent to bring revised budget options with lower expenditure increases back to the board at our next meeting. So. On March twenty fourth, twenty twenty, the superintendent delivered three budget revisions for their school board consideration. And revisions included cuts to proposed projects, programs, and staffing, as well as a lower budgeted health insurance increase. Now I'll talk about this a little bit. So again, just like not knowing about our state revenue, which although we do find out about that pretty early on in the process, the health insurance increase comes fairly late in the process. So we usually drop a pretty high number in there just as a cushion. You never want to drop a lumber in there that's lower than the actual. So we budgeted ten percent for an increase. And at that time, we found out that the state range was going to be capped at six percent. So that was time for some celebration. So that was built into the expenditure reduction scenarios. And the, but the, the board had some very careful deliberate conversation about what was cut out of the budget to reach each of those scenarios. And then after careful analysis, six percent budget increase really was able to meet our goals. It actually was able to get down to five point nine five percent spending. So. Some of the things, if you look at, and I'm going to refer back to this sheet as well. This is the FY twenty twenty, twenty twenty one budget changes to reflect a five point nine percent increase. This was updated on, um, April 7th. So there were a few things that were reduced before we asked the superintendent to bring us, um, reduced expenditures. Like I mentioned earlier, after, um, the question and answer period, which is a, a very rigorous period for the board and the administrators to go over everything. The, the permanent substitute at Poncove had already been removed. The facilities project manager had already been removed and, um, the middle school classroom teacher, uh, position that was going to be absorbed, you know, was, was already in the budget. So there were reductions and changes to get to that 5.95% increase. And there were, uh, those cuts included, um, cutting the bandroom project projector and audio system, uh, changing from laptops to Chromebooks to reduce the, the outlay. The stair treads at Poncove will not be replaced. We will not have new whiteboards installed. Ca- uh, carpet in the high school main office will not be replaced. We were going to, uh, potentially purchase a van because there is a, um, a, a van that died, so we are going to lease that van instead. There's an elimination of a high school English slash literacy teacher or, and elective teachers. There's, um, an elimination of a point five teacher leader coordinator. Uh, there's an eliminated point five nurses assistant. Um, eliminated, oh, sorry, changed athletic grounds teacher from an FT, uh, partial FTE to an hourly position. Um, there was a change, uh, to an ed tech one uh, position in the library at halftime as opposed to ed tech two full time. Uh, we were lucky to hear about that health insurance ceiling going from 10% down to 6%. And then before this was delivered to us on April 7th, we learned our actual increase was 5.95%. So we had that reduction in, um, those, those projects and positions were all cut from the original request budget.
Hey Elizabeth, it's Jamie. Can I just interrupt you for one second? Cause, because there was a question or comment that was made during the public comment period and you just went, went past, um, that specific position. I just wanted to call attention to it. Um, I, somebody from the public, I think it was, um, Ms. Townsend said, was questioning the addition of uh, an assistant for the athletics department, um, when there might not be sports being played, et cetera, et cetera. You, you had just pointed out, and, and I assume I'm correct in, in presuming that with the shift of this recommendation to be an hourly position, if there's no hours being worked, there's no cost incurred, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Sorry, I'm trying to go quickly because I don't want to keep everybody hearing.
No, that's fine. I only wanted to call it out.
In my office all night.
Yeah, no, I understand. I only wanted to call it out because there was a direct question from the public about it. So.
And I appreciate that, Jamie. And there's, I mean, there's a trickiness in this. There might be athletics in the fall, there might not. It's hard to know. Obviously there's going to be great, um, we're going to conduct all hiring with, um, an eye to the future and, you know, positions may not be filled. Hours may not be worked. It's hard to know at this time. Um, so if, we're going to move on a little bit lower to the equipment and positions that are included in the FY 21 budget. Um, there really are not 13 positions. Um, I did, tried to do a little quick calculation to the side. Um, we are adding a point four FTE French teacher, point seven five science teacher, point six math teacher. Those are 100% cannot underline that enough enrollment driven. Um, we had an expectation of 511 students at the high school this year. For whatever reason, more students showed up back at the high school, either in the sophomore class or in the freshman class than were expected. And, um, those classes are quite big, a lot of them. And so we are understaffed now. And we're expecting, um, quite a few more students at the high school this year. So on top of the, um, overly big enrollment this year. So we're really, the, the high school is really targeting the math department and the science department, as well as a small addition to the French, uh, the world language department. Um, the, there's a high school point five library ed tech and, um, that is really 100% due to the fact that the, uh, the current high school librarian was hired under very different circumstances because that's one of the things we ask. If you're asking for help for the librarian, what has changed? Why, why does she need this now? And she had full-time ed tech support when she was hired here. That support is gone and her job duties, you know, had to pick up the person that was gone and have increased on top of that. So, um, we also have, um, kind of a remolding of a current position called the extended learning opportunities coordinator salaries and benefits. That's a wash. There, there are, um, subtractions in the budget to, um, ameliorate that addition to the budget. The current position is a, um, it's kind of a funny position. It's not a teacher position. It has, um, volunteer coordinator. I like check, you know, making sure people have their volunteer training and their fingerprints and all that sort of thing. Um, so the, the volunteer coordinator side of that's going to go to the high school and this position, I'm not the high school, the, um, central office. And due to cutting back on some other positions, that extended learning opportunities coordinator can become a full teaching position. Um, we're adding a, oh.
It's Heather. Can I just add one thing? Can I interrupt for one second or no? You, I just want to bring back to the point to all the part-time math, the part-time math and science teacher. Um, due to the enrollment coming in, that's going to bubble up. We have a large eighth grade class that's coming in that you're talking about supporting. And I just want to reiterate that in the middle school, we're absorbing the retirement. So a position will be reduced in the middle school, but needs to be taken up in the high school. I just, I just thought that was important to you to add to what you're saying. Thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. No problem. Um, so if you do add up those enrollment driven, um, high school teachers, it's, uh, 1.75 uh, actual new positions that are enrollment driven. So if we move to, uh, Poncove, we have another enrollment driven, um, classroom teacher. We have a smaller fourth grade moving into the middle school and we have a bigger fourth grade coming next year, which means we need to hire a teacher to stay within our, um, guidelines. We also have the aforementioned guidance counselor, which, um, kind of as a surprise to me was, uh, supported by EPS and, um, by our, our peer schools. We are, we have one guidance counselor, um, serving so many children. Um, we have a special surfaces, services, um, ed tech, which is mandated by law to meet the needs of a special ed student. Um, we have a facilities night shift maintenance position, which if, uh, council would like to, um, at the end of this presentation, ask Perry a little bit about. Um, he can speak to it, but it is an incredibly necessary position. And you might see something kind of funny. There's a facilities custodian that is in here for just the town side. And I know, I think most town counselors understand this, but for the public, all, um, custodians are actually school employees, even though some of them work just in school. Some of them work in town buildings and school buildings, and some of them just work in town buildings. However, they have to be part of the school expenditures. And then the town will, um, basically reimburse the school department for the cost of that employee. So there's a facilities custodian. Originally there had been two facilities custodians. Um, one of those was, um, cut earlier. But we're, uh, still trying to recover. We're still trying to, um, add that facilities custodian. And my understanding is that the sanitization and cleaning of the buildings is really never been more important than it is right now. And the custodians are still working quite hard. We have, um, that athletics assistant that Jamie mentioned at, in a 595 hour hours. It's an hourly rate. So that person doesn't work, that person is not paid. And then we have the, um, middle school indoor track coach. Again, if we don't offer a track program, you know, there is some conversation to be had there. We have a lease of new ma- of a new maintenance van, which was the aforementioned, um, you know, possible purchase. And then we have some double robotics equipment. So, as you can see, if you do a little addition, the, the total cut from the original request budget, and it represented here is 534,899. That is cut from the original, um, budget. This current budget we're presenting is a 5.95% increase in expenditures with a tax impact of 5.3% at this time. We're still sort of, uh, moving linearly. At that time, that tax increase was still below the average of the previous three years. So then in April, mid-April, the school board voted at its April business meeting after an extensive review period, which began in January spanning pre and post COVID-19 reality. Um, after months of public meetings with structured agendas and careful goal oriented focus, the board is proud of the FY 21 school department budget. We felt like that budget met the needs of our students, um, because their needs don't change when our circumstances change. We still, the students still come to us. We still have to educate them. So, something very different happened. Um, in April 21, 2020, we had an unprecedented special business meeting after we had already adopted the budget. We convened to further scrutinize the budget in lieu of the COVID-19 pandemic and attending uncertainties, and we were able to adopt a new version of the budget with a lower tax impact. Expenditures were once again measured against our goals. We had to be absolutely certain that what we were bringing forward was what we really absolutely predicted we would need to serve our students. There was a great deal of uncertainty that we discussed. And at this time, I'm hoping Donna will talk a little bit about the two different scenarios we might face in the fall around uncertainties.
Sure. So many of the comments and concerns we have received have expressed the reality that the FY 21 school budget process began in one time pre-pandemic and has now entered another time pandemic reality. This is a correct statement. And as we examine two pictures of what the future might bring, it becomes evident that even the proposed FY 21 school budget may not begin to address the needs that we will quite likely have, regardless of which scenario develops. So thinking about what our students are going through now um, in some homes, and, and they're going through very, very different situations in their homes. In some homes, parents are working at home and at the same time trying to support their students, um, academically. We have essential worker parents and students are in, either in a daycare with family members that might not be able to provide academic support. We have some of our older students caring for their younger siblings, students while parents work. And those students don't have time to do their own work because they're busy taking care of their siblings. We have students who normally need additional supports based on their needs, who haven't been receiving the same degree of those additional supports. We have students with prior social emotional needs who haven't been receiving the same degree of support. We have students with newly servicing social emotional needs based on the challenges and traumas of these times. And in a worst case scenarios, but we know this is happening, we have evidence. We have students who are experiencing physical and emotional abuse that have not been detected while they have been home. So we have to recognize that our students are in very different situations and experiencing, um, very different things as we are in the present remote learning situation. So we have really two different scenarios. Um, there might be more, um, in the coming days. But the first one is that we'd like to think about is, um, if we return to our classrooms in the fall of 2020. So our teachers and our director of teaching and learning, Kathy Stank, Stanker, will be working to identify end of the year academic benchmarks for students in these challenging times. Uh, it's important in teaching that you identify where your students are, what they know and can do so that you can meet, what, meet them where they are and then move forward. Uh, based on that important premise of teaching, when our students return to the classroom, um, we aren't, we aren't sure where they will be. We would quite likely need staff for administering, uh, end of the year student assessments that would normally have been administered the previous spring to determine, determine where the students are. We might need, need staff for supporting students who are not meeting those teacher identified benchmarks. Quite likely that will be the case for many students. We need staff to support students who are experiencing emotional trauma based on their experiences during the pandemic. Uh, we need staff to investigate concerns regarding home situations that surface when students return. Um, and special education staff for attending IAP meetings and adjusting individual education plans based on student gaps that have surfaced during remote learning. So those are some of the needs that we quite possibly will face as we return to school. Then scenario two, and nobody wants to think about this, but what if we do, uh, continue with remote learning in the fall of 2020? A, additional support will be needed. Student support poses an even greater challenge should we need to continue with remote learning in the fall. Teachers, interventionists and specialist education supporters are simply not able to provide the same level of support that we can provide when our students are in school. And some of our students are not having great success with online learning. Many of these students will quite likely need increased support, requiring more support staff. Director of Special Services Del Peavy reports that we would probably need an additional one to two educational technicians at each school to provide additional support to our special education staff, should the remote learning situation run into the next school year. And these staff aren't in our school budget. Food services, and this has been, um, a huge, um, a huge thing to tackle as our students have been, um, at home. Currently we're feeding over 70 students. Our nutrition services department workers are preparing boxes of food that are delivered by Chief Fenton, Dave Galvin and Darren Estes from the Cape Elizabeth Police Department. The food is being funded through the National School Lunch Program. We have two $500 grants through Full Plates. We have a $500 grant from CF and many, many citizen donations. And we want to thank everybody for their donations. Um, as well as the local funding that, that supports our school lunch program. Several grant applications for which Peter Esposito, um, nutrition services director has applied have been denied due to the depletion of funds. So we are running into organizations that have used all their funds. Peter reports that it would be difficult at the current time to predict the cost of continuing to deliver food to families throughout next year. There are many factors to consider such as, will we get more people? Will we be able to continue with the current waiver from the National School Lunch Program? Will our food supply, uh, source be interrupted? Currently we are having some challenges, um, getting some goods. Uh, we do have, uh, through our, um, greater, uh, schools, a greater Sibago Schools Education, uh, Association, we are trying to, uh, we're, we're involved in a co-op and we're trying to finalize our bid process, uh, so that we can get the best bids and the best pricing. Uh, technology is a concern. Our district is fortunate in that most of our families do have internet connections. Um, and many have multiple devices at home. But what we're learning from families is that although they may have multiple devices, uh, they also have multiple people in their families that need to use those devices at the same time. So, uh, talking to Noel Half, Director of Technology, uh, should remote learning continue, uh, he recommends that we would need to purchase more iPads so that all Poncove students have access to iPad uses at home. So suggesting a three-year lease, and he does say that he doesn't like lease, uh, lease, um, opportunities, but three-year lease of approximately 320 iPads, which would cost about $6,000 a year. Another huge concern that we have is the, uh, condition that many of our devices that have been distributed. What, what will be the condition where, when they return to the technology team this summer? To date, we absorb most of the cost for technology repair and we do have $12,000 in the budget for those repairs. However, Noel predicts that we're probably facing another additional $8,000, um, of repairs. We don't know which scenario we'll be experiencing in the fall. We don't know which scenario we'll be experiencing in the fall, or there may even be a third scenario that we haven't even thought of. But what we anticipate is that whatever the scenario, it will most likely put a strain on the budget that we do have proposed.
Thank you, Donna. My understanding is that we also have bought some mobile hotspots to help out some families who don't have internet access, so we have absorbed that cost. And for counselors and the public that, you know, might not understand the challenges that some of these students are facing. We have students who need, you know, physical support when they are in our buildings, and they are not able to have that support at home. And so when they might have been functioning at a particular level when they were in school, they may return to us needing, you know, even a one-on-one support, which is costly. It's not in this budget, and it might be what those students need. So there are just a lot of unknowns right now. So getting back to our kind of unprecedented post-adoption meeting. We looked at our budget, we scrutinized that budget again. We looked at that, we looked at this sheet again, and we had conversation, and those expenditures were upheld. The other part of that meeting was new information from the town finance director that allowed the school board to increase the use of unassigned funds and thus lower the tax impact to four point one-three percent. And one thing I would like to highlight is thus far, many of the communications from the citizens at this time were referencing expenditure increase. And so I want to make sure that people understand that, you know, the expenditure increase is not the same as the tax impact. And so just again, we were able to use more unassigned funds than we had anticipated, and we were able to lower this year, this upcoming budget's tax impact to four point one-three percent. So if you go back to my absolute favorite spreadsheet, the Budget Tax Implications FY twenty-one spreadsheet, you go to the far right and the bottom column, you will see four point one-three percent. So we're moving on, we're getting so close to the end. Thank you for everybody hanging in there with me.
Excuse me, Elizabeth, you notice that Chris has his hand up?
Oh, I don't, but Chris, go for it.
Sure, I kind of just want to jump into the meat of it at this point. But that aside, I just really was hoping that you could address Donna's point because that's what the entire conversation for me is going to be over tonight and tomorrow if need be. A lot of the public comment that we've had, a lot of the feedback we've received by email is very astutely and very correctly noted. This is a really, really bad economic situation we're facing. And we all know that. At the same time, we also do need to keep in mind that the, last time I checked, NASDAQ is still seventy percent higher than it was five years ago. So yeah, it's a bad economic situation, but that affects some people. And you can't look at the stock market because amortized over the five years, they're still up twelve percent a year or something like that. So if you're looking at stock investments, you're still doing pretty darn good over the last five years. But if you're looking at salary, you have a lot of people that are going to have some real, really hard times in the very near future, to the extent they're not already in that situation. So we've got this mess on the economic side. But what's been missing from the comments from the general public and from almost all of the emails that I've seen so far is an acknowledgement, even if they do recognize this, it just hasn't been in the feedback so far, in a recognition of exactly how big of an utter disaster our society is facing right now with respect to education. We, if you look at education as the great equalizer, the thing that allows people to move from one social strata to another. We've, in modern times, never, ever had anything like this. The upheaval that is going on in these children's lives. We've never seen this in the last fifty, sixty years. We, last, I did some, yeah. In my prior life, I dealt with some studies that looked at the fact that if a child even misses five days of school, it results in adverse economic or adverse educational outcomes for them in the long run. Those of you that are educators probably know this better than I do. That's five days of school, it's the reason why we focus on truancy. And although the school department has done their best to deal with this situation, this is a disaster for education for these kids. And as much as I feel really bad for people like myself, where like, man, I've missed out on tens of thousands of dollars of income, it is going to be really tough for these kids. This is unprecedented, this is the rest of their lives. Their education is just, they're going to take a big, big, big hit. And as you noted, we're going to need some serious response to intervention here come fall. We're going to have to figure out, there are going to be kids who have languished, there's going to be kids who have accelerated, they're just going to be all over the map. And the school's going to have to try to figure that out. So I guess what I really want to hear, and I don't know, and obviously the answer from you may be, we don't have an answer, we can't figure this out yet. What is the plan come fall? What I want to hear, what I want the voters to be handed by us is the voters can decide for themselves, what are we capable of providing? Is this too much, is this too little? What do we think we can, what can we provide? And the voters, from my perspective, need to look at that, and then they need to look at what is the actual need. And from my perspective, what we can provide is going down, and that sucks. But what we need, and the answer might be, you don't know this yet, and that sucks, and we're stuck with these schedules, and it just is what it is. But what we need, I fear what we need is going to be a whole lot more. And as you've noted, your budget is going to be, you get funding based on whatever goes to the voters and gets approved, and there isn't anything else. You don't have the ability, tell me if I'm wrong, but you don't have the ability to go back for a second request and say, wow, we thought we could get by with X. But oh my God, the disaster we have here where half of these kids are failing this grade and have to repeat fifth grade or seventh grade or whatever. You're going to need the resources to deal with that. What happens if you don't have that money? What happens if you don't have the resources? What is the plan? And if the answer is you don't have a plan, I get it. Because this is a horrible situation, but we're going to have to come up with a plan. And I would love to be able to tell the voters, this is how much the ideal response would be. I would love to be able to hand to the voters, the school in their best guess, this is what the plan's going to look like if we have to deal with this intervention issue. So absent that, with the budget that you have put forward, I view this as a pre-corona budget. I understand you looked at it with the timing and everything, but I look at it as a pre-corona budget. Do you have the ability, or can you, and then I'm going to stop talking. Do you have the ability to guess and say, wow, we're really, 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 we're going to have to double or triple the number of people we have on RIT because we've, half the class now isn't meeting math requirements? And do you have the ability to say, we're canceling all the football program, we're canceling lacrosse program, we're canceling soccer, we're canceling all these extracurriculars. It sucks, we feel bad for everyone that loves them and lives for them, and this is what gives them their meaning in life, these kids, and keeps them motivated. But we have to cancel it, and we're going to shift all these resources to the core goal, the core focus, the core purpose of this education system, which is to make sure these kids know how to read, they know how to write, and they know how to do their math. And will you have the ability to shift the resources if need be? Will you be agile enough to do that? And then finally, last point, and then I'm going to shut up. I think back to, I think it was twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen. I look back to that budget, and for me, that was the one, that was the straw that broke the camel's butt back. At the time, and I know some of you on this call, some of you that are still on the board, were involved in these budgets. There was a decision to cut the ed techs at Poncove. And instead, the resources were diverted somewhere else. And this is where I keep saying, like, the high school, we need to focus on the high school because you can't starve the young kids. You get more return on your investment by investing in small children than you do with middle schoolers and high schoolers. So I constantly say, throw resources at Poncove, it's a better return on investment. But what we do is we cut the ed techs at Poncove, and there were a number of kids who were borderline with math, and they fell below that line. And they've struggled ever since, and they haven't been able to catch up. And it ended up costing us the taxpayers a lot more in the long run because we were forced to set aside resources for RIT for those kids because they then now qualify for IEPs, and the federal government says you have to spend these resources. So it cost us more in the long run because we were a penny shy, pound foolish, and we cut those ed techs that were needed in Poncove. Whatever was, whatever year that was, twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, whatever it was. So I look back at that, and that for me is like, this is what's going to happen again. If we don't put the resources for this intervention that's going to be coming down the line in the fall, we're going to have a big problem. But I also recognize our ability to provide is not what it was. So we've got to figure this out, and whether it's we have to slash these other services in order to be able to provide, or if being able to provide is going to require a ten percent increase from what you have. I just, we need guidance, at least that's what I want to see, is how much is it going to cost for us to have this? And I also recognize, I'm going to shut up. I realized, said that already two or three times now. I also recognize this is a problem that Cape is not alone in facing. This is something Maine and the entire country and the entire world is going to have to deal with. So I recognize the answer might be, we need Augusta, we need the federal government. But I'm just looking for guidance, and I totally recognize you may not have that. And with that, I'm just going to shut up for the rest of the night.
Maybe not for the rest of the night, but thank you, Chris. I think I'm going to try to throw it over to Donna to try to answer that. What I can say is that I know that our superintendent and our administrators are trying to do their best to forecast, and like you said, it's really hard. And the one word I want to change in, there's just one word that I want to change in something you said, which is not if the students need these interventions, it's they do. We just don't know to what degree and how many, because we have no idea. But I'm going to throw it over to Donna.
Okay, so a couple of the things that we have been doing already. We realize that, as Elizabeth said, it's not if, it is a reality that we're going to have many students who are behind, who aren't meeting what we, what our benchmark, say, grade level or course benchmarks are. We know this is a reality. One of the things that we're talking about, and we've been meeting twice a week for about two hours a session as an administrative team, and we're meeting tomorrow morning. And one of the big topics of conversation is end of the year. And is there, is there a way to look at our end of the year and provide some remediation to our students who we can identify right now that need remediation? We will be changing, looking at changing, modifying some of our end-of-the-year benchmarks, realizing that kids are not going to be where they normally would be at the end of the year in many of our classes, most of our classes. So the teachers of the next year, say, we're talking about fourth grade students, those students probably won't be where a normal fourth grade student would be at the end of the year. So our fifth grade teachers are going to have to realize that and then deal with that as the students that they're passing on to the next grade level. So we're really going to have to modify where we think most students are, realizing that some students will be there. And so, and we will be addressing the needs of those students as well. So we're, we know that we're going to have students all over the place. The first, as I was saying, the first thing that we're really going to need to do is do some assessments so we actually know where our students are, know what we're dealing with. And we really won't know that until September, when the students come back. The answer about changing funding around within our budget, we do have that, the ultimate number that we can't go beyond. But there are some provisions in school budgets for moving funds around. It requires at times the approval of the school board, and may even require the approval of the community. But we do have, we do have that option. And we really don't know what we're facing with these students. We know we're going to have many students who come back with social emotional issues, just the whole trauma of living through this, being away from their friends and teachers, as well as the academic piece. So, and Chris, you're right, students all over the country, all over the world are going to be dealing with this. It's my friends who are retiring this year are feeling very sorry for those of us that are working next year.
Elizabeth, do you want to continue?
Yeah, we're almost done, we're ready, we're getting so close. So I would like, so I'm sorry, Chris, that I don't think that any of our administrators, and certainly not Donna, are in a position to give you a number. I think that it's a moving target and something that I think people are working very hard to try to figure out. And we need to keep working on the plan, but the plan is in progress. So we're going to finish up with goals. So at the end of the budget process, we held our budget up to our goals that we established at the beginning of the budget process. So goal number one was high-quality education maintained and improved. This budget continues successful proven programs and services. It shows a commitment to mental and physical health and wellness for all students. It meets the enrollment demands and programmatic needs of all students. It addresses the longstanding and long-documented need for increased custodial support in both town and school buildings. And administrators and department heads worked as a true team to meet the needs of the system as a whole, and that greatly benefits all teachers, all students, and the community. Goal two was careful examination of the line items and consideration of the success and effectiveness of the expenditures in order to provide a fiscally responsible budget. We felt that this budget met that goal. Some examples are careful study of enrollment demanded that we absorb a retirement at the middle school. And then many projects and positions in the original request budget were modified or cut. We added an extra budget meeting after adoption to reexamine and reconsider all lines. And here's where I would like people to really pay attention. The expenditure increase is five point nine-five percent. That equates to a tax increase of four point one-three percent. The average tax increase of the three prior years is five point five percent. So our current tax increase is well below the average of the prior three years. And the combined town and school tax increase is estimated to be roughly two point two-seven percent. And that information was provided by the pro forma from the town manager. And I think that's the number we all really need to pay close attention to. That is the two point two-seven percent, which is town and school combined tax impact. So we're continuing with our goals. So we needed to do our best to support our twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-five strategic plan goals with this budget. We felt that this budget supports the health and well-being of all students. We felt that this budget supports global competency. We felt that this budget supports multiple pathways and definitions of success. We felt that this budget supports safe, sustainable, and effective facilities as much as it can. This is, this is a lacking area. We also felt this budget supports environmental responsibility. The needs assessment report identified many red issues. Those are of dire urgency, the kind of issues that probably should have been addressed yesterday. And the yellow ones are considered important, and they probably should be addressed today or tomorrow. So several of those red issues are SRRF projects, which are going forward because those funds have been secured from the state. Building committee work is temporarily on hold, and seriously degrading buildings are still a major issue. And finally, goal four, clear and continual communication. We solicited and welcomed citizen questions and comments at every meeting. We opened and closed every meeting with citizen comment. We posted all meetings and agendas and materials on the website and on Facebook. We had live broadcast and then a post online or videotape and post online of all budget meetings. Zoom meetings were placed in-person meetings by late March. And I will admit that our very first budget meeting, it may have been March twenty-fourth. We were the first governmental group in town going ahead with meetings. And we had a little trouble recording, so it's a partial recording from that meeting. But otherwise, I feel like everything else has gone quite smoothly, and we have been able to have public participation in all our Zoom meetings. There have been thorough and timely recaps of every single budget meeting sent via email, posted on the website and Facebook. Regular budget updates have been submitted to the Cape Courier. And this has been especially important. There's been regular communication and collaboration among the school department, school board, and with the town manager and town council. So with that, I am So with that, I am finally done with my presentation. I'd like to thank everybody for hanging in there with me. And if the town council would like to ask any questions, I will probably defer most of them to someone much more knowledgeable than myself.
So first, Elizabeth, I really wanna thank you for the thoroughness and detail in your presentation. And thank all the other board members and superintendent and the building administrators and other staff for their contributions and work on the budget thus far. I also wanna say, at least speaking for myself, that I hope that the conversation that follows and the questions that follow are not interpreted in any way as a reflection of not appreciating all of that work. So as has been referenced multiple times, you know, we're in, we're living in times that very few of us, you know, if any of us have ever experienced anything even remotely like this. So I suspect that the questions that you'll get and the conversation that will follow is much more a reflection of those times and not specifically a reflection of the work that you all have done to date. So I hope you'll take it, you know, in that context. I'm gonna open it up to the council for questions for Elizabeth and the board and the administrators, if they're able to answer. I suspect that based on what we've heard tonight, that many of us, you know, need some time to process a little bit, formulate some other questions if you don't have them already, which is why I figured that we will need the time that was already earmarked for tomorrow's workshop. Also, I'm cognizant of the fact that we've been at this for two hours already. And so I wanna be respectful of people's time and energy. You know, this is incredibly important work that we're doing. I don't wanna shortchange it in any way or rush through a conversation tonight that deserves, you know, full of thorough discussion and attention. So if folks have either initial comments or some pertinent questions that they wanna put on the table for right now, I'll entertain those. But also, you know, it's fully my intention that we, that we hold our meeting tomorrow night with my expectation that folks will have a lot more questions that follow then. So with that being said, let me pull back up my participant list. I'm gonna go to Chairman Adams and then Counselor Penny Jordan. So Valerie Adams, go ahead.
I think Penny had her hand up first.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if you wanna call on her first.
Sure, if you're yielding. I didn't see which order they went up. So Penny, you go ahead first then.
Okay. Jamie, I'm glad you said, suggested we take time to kinda digest everything that we've heard, 'cause I think the presentation that Elizabeth did was fantastic. And I appreciated all the work that went into that. I wanna say right up front that I really do not question the work and due diligence that went into creating this budget. And, but my, my position, and I really appreciate what Chris Strah brought forward, is that I truly would like to, number one, see a budget that's representative of what we are going to be dealing with and how the, how we as a town, and the schools being a significant part of where our revenues go, how we address the challenges that we're going to have with students. At the same time, we're addressing challenges where our revenues could be decreasing. And, and we could face having, having jobs within our town, whether it be the school or municipal, that we have to address the amount of staffing and whether it aligns with our revenues. I think there's a lot of unknowns, but I think we do know that there are some challenging times ahead of us. So I'd really like to see what that work, what that needs to look like and how we're going to address the needs of the students as they're coming back into, and I'll make the assumption they're coming back to the campus. Because I hope that it isn't the other alternative, because I think that's going to even be more detrimental to all of the students, no matter what age.
Before going to Counselor Adams, is there anybody from the school board or staff that would like to speak to that? Or?
I don't know that we can answer Counselor Jordan's question. I think I could try to bring it over to Donna again. But I think that you and Counselor Strah have hit on, like, the big question with a capital Q. What are we really going to need? What will it really look like? It's, it's, it's an unknown, and it's tricky. So I guess for a follow-up, to try to get some clarification from Penny. Are you asking to, would you wish the, like, a mock-up or a projection of what the superintendent and administrators would actually, you know, consider they actually might need in the fall to address those needs?
What I see that the, the current budget does is that it really addresses the status quo. You know, here, here we are, we're continuing to build off our goals, et cetera, et cetera. And I think that that's, that's not where we necessarily are going to land. And that you can't do, I shouldn't say you can't. It would be the ultimate challenge to do both. To, to do, to achieve what's been laid out in the existing budget and to also address the needs of the students coming back to campus. I think that what I am suggesting is that we know that students coming back to campus are going to have challenges. We know that we're going to have to baseline them. We know that we're going to have to probably make shifts. We know all of these things. I hate to sound callous or whatever, but I think you're going to have to re-ground and, and almost feel like a pause in order to move ahead again. Because I think that's what this situation has caused, is almost a pause button. So now how do we start it and keep, and start it moving forward? And when Chris suggested, do we look at, do we have to shift dollars from extracurriculars, curricular activities that can impact some students who need that in order to stay in school? But do we need to cut them back? Those are, those are the things, that's where I think we are at, is we hit the pause button. Now need to restart it. And you're not gonna, the budget to me that's put forward is a absence of a pause button. I, I, I wouldn't wanna be sitting in your chair right now. I really wouldn't. Because you're having to come up with scenarios that say, here, here are the things that we know could be entering, coming onto campus, and we need to rally all of the experience and compassion and thoughtfulness of all of the teachers on campus to, to some extent, do what they don't normally do on a daily basis. So they're being asked to do a job to bring kids off the pause button back into a world where they can feel competent, successful, emotionally supported, and all of those things. And to me, the budget that we have in front of us is absent of that.
I really appreciate your clarification, and I can see where you're coming from now. And I've written that down. What I will say is that, so if you go back to that list that I showed, the list that showed what was cut out and what is in the budget.
I saw that.
Okay, so what council, community members, and even school board needs to understand is that we approve a number and not, we don't approve the positions. If we show up in the fall, and it could look completely different. And so it's not necessarily that we're approving positions. Those are what, right now, what is driving the budget. Honestly, it's probably not enough money. But that's, we've heard from quite a few people that they don't believe we are gonna be able to or should have more money. So we've been able to justify and, and strongly advocate for that amount of money. Because in the end, it's really up to the superintendent. It could be that we, you know, we approved this number, and we think we're going to have these positions and these certain projects. And in the fall, she and her team have completely, you know, over the summer, had to completely change, as you said, what that number now supports. Because in the end, on the school board level, we don't micromanage, you know, what the principals and the superintendent choose to do. Our job is really the number. So I share that with you because I agree with you. And that this, so this budget is really, you know, we've got the number and the positions that are in there to support it. But in the end, those, those positions could change, and they might have to. Donna, do you have any more that you wanna add in reference?
Well, I think one of the positions that's going to be really important to keep is that guidance council position at Ponco, because I think we're gonna have a lot of little ones that come in that have issues. So I think that that position is extremely important to keep. We also know that with students, building relationships is so important. And if you, if you, the fewer teachers you have, the less chance you have of building deep relationships with our students. It's, it's going to be a lot on the classroom teachers to, to support their students and to, to make, to fill in the gaps. And we need, we need teachers to be able to do that. And if teachers are piled on with very large classes, as they would be if we eliminated the positions at the high school, that just wouldn't be able to happen. So I think, you know, our teachers, we have great teachers. They know their students. They're willing to support their students. But we have to be careful about the numbers of students that we give them. Because if we, if we overwhelm them with large numbers of students, which some of those high school teachers have very large classes, they, they won't be able to, to break them into groups to, to address their needs where they are. So I think we have to be really careful about that. And I know we're very cognizant of the economic times. But I don't think that eliminating positions at this point is going to do our students.
I don't think I'm suggesting eliminating positions are with students. What I suggest is that the positions that are not student-centric maybe need to be vetted a little more. This might not be the time to have the additional janitorial positions. That there could be positions that are also support roles that maybe need to be looked at. I think if I look at the budget, it's, the money should be spent on stabilizing children.
Thank you.
If you need to ask volunteers from the community to come in and do other things on that school campus, I think that if we're trying to balance dollars expended, where those dollars go, and we have a community that is very engaged in ensuring that we take care of people in our town, that I bet there could be a whole different type of volunteer service that people adopt three classrooms and they become the cleaners for them, something. But there are ways to focus energy and dollars on students and identify ways to engage the community in addressing the problem together versus just saying, "Give me more dollars." It's, "Give me some time," and that's what, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Penny. That's great.
Counselor Adams?
I have more comment than question at this point. I just wanted to say thank you to all of you on the school board for the work that you did. And thank you for that presentation tonight. It's definitely a tough year for all of us. And Jamie, I appreciate you leaving tomorrow open for questions because I have a lot of thinking to do and likely will have some tough questions tomorrow. But I don't want those tough questions to be perceived. I mean, that I don't appreciate the work that all of you did because you clearly went through this budget very carefully and thought through things. And I appreciate the process and the time that you took.
Thanks. Counselor Gableson?
Great, thanks, Jamie. And thank you, Elizabeth and Donna, for the presentation again. I think I'm very grateful for all the work that you guys have put into this. I think maybe to build a little bit on what Penny is asking, one of the things that I think would be really helpful for me in thinking about this, this budget and this decision would be having some, some thought into some additional scenarios and how they might play out. The budget is kind of presented as a particular scenario that envisions how those resources will be deployed. And one of the challenges we're facing right now is there's uncertainty, both on the revenue side and on the expenditure side. And there's also uncertainty on what we're gonna be able to do or not do. So I think the likelihood that we are going to be living in a world where the scenario that is presented in this budget plays out seems slim. And so what, and I realize this is more than is possible to do before tomorrow night. But, you know, what, what, what I, what I'd like to see is, you know, so one scenario is we go back to school and we have to have 10 kids in a classroom, max. You know, what is, what are the resources, what does that look like from a resource perspective? Do we have, you know, are there, are there options that we have that would let us meet that with the resources that are in this budget or not? What if we go back for remote learning for part of the year? You know, those kinds of things. And I don't, you know, I'm not expecting these to be highly refined calculations, but those, you know, a little, some additional thought on what those scenarios look like, I think would be really helpful for me. To Chris's point, just to make sure that you guys have the resources that you're going to need to meet the needs of the students. And that, you know, that's, that's a priority for me in this, in this combined budget. And then the other thing that I'm just thinking about as I go back looking through the municipal side of the budget, which I realize we're not talking about tonight. But as I look through all the expenditures in there, I think, you know, there, there's, there's less uncertainty in much of the municipal budget just because of the nature of how those expenditures are made. But the questions that I'm asking myself with all of the expenditures that we have in the municipal budget, going back through it, is, are these resources that we need to support the ongoing emergency response? If the answer is yes, it's a no-brader. Are these resources that we need to make sure that our community is going to continue to thrive as we recover from this? That seems like a good expenditure of resources. And if the answer to both of those is no, some capital expenditures are gonna fall in this third category. Is this something that if we put it off a year or two years, it's gonna cost us more? And then it gets into some gray area, because if it costs a little bit more, you know, I don't know. But, but those are, those are kind of the But, but those are, those are kind of the questions I'm asking myself as I look through the municipal budget, recognizing that there's a lot more uncertainty on the revenue side as well as the expense side in the school budget. I don't know how useful those are to you in thinking through what the scenarios might look like, but that's kind of, that's the way I'm trying to start thinking through this so that we can come to something, a budget where we're going to meet the needs of taxpayers who are hurting, but also have the resources we need to support the appropriate response.
Thank you. I don't, obviously, we can't answer that right now.
I would jump in with kind of a follow-up to that. I think that, and hopefully, you know, the benefit of some of the time that I talked about at the outset of the meeting, that we have the opportunity to buy ourselves here by pushing out the referendum vote and council vote on this by just a little bit, is that there are certain things in both, and I agree, not just contained to the school budget, certain things that both the school budget and the municipal budget that make assumptions that look like they're becoming increasingly likely that they won't be accurate, right? So if you think about, and it's been talked about here a little bit, you know, there may be curtailment that would have to be dealt with. It, you know, there was a lot of discussion out of Augusta today with the governor convening a couple of economic councils and looking at impact revenues and forecasts for fiscal year and all that kind of stuff. I think it's increasingly likely that we're gonna see some sort of reduction on the municipal side in revenue sharing. That was something that Counselor Adams and I heard last week at a forum that we participated in. The point of all this is to say that I think with both the school and the municipal budget, we need to start drawing up, you know, some contingency versions that look at, well, if this increasingly likely reality actually becomes the reality, what does that impact? What does that look like? As opposed to going forward with fingers crossed and hoping that the things that we've already got built into the budget as far as a revenue perspective go, continue to stay there. So, I would turn to Matt, you, and to Donna to say, you know, again, not that we need anything reworked necessarily for tomorrow's meeting, but, you know, from my view, I think we need to go back and look at some of those assumptions that we've made and really challenge ourselves to see how realistic we think those assumptions remain today. That's one thing. Another thing that perhaps, Matt, you could address even now, or certainly, just sort of narratively by tomorrow's meeting, is I appreciated the point that was made at the conclusion of your presentation, Elizabeth, about, you know, the difference between, you know, increase or delta on the expense line versus what that means to the bottom line, net impact to taxes. It's interesting, I actually had, you know, there was a constituent who reached out to me quite concerned, though maybe not as many folks are paying attention to it, that if you look at the actual increase on the expense side, on the municipal side this year, it looks exorbitant.
I'm not gonna say it out loud, because I certainly, but yeah.
And so, you know, there's some work that John Corderaro and Matt have been doing to reclass some expenses that for a long time have, you know, fallen into one form of accounting and are being rejiggered, you know, for a more accurate picture of how we're actually funding those activities. So, a number that looks really big on the town side for an increase in expenses is actually in reality not nearly as exorbitant from an impact to taxes standpoint. So, my question for you, Matt, though, is when we hear people, you know, make requests for flat budgets and things like that, my view is, what is the net impact to taxes? And whether or not their actual taxes are going up, and less about the mechanics of how we get to that number. And so I'm curious if you could either tonight or for tomorrow's meeting, just have a little bit of a primer, if you will, on, you know, for every, you know, X amount that something gets reduced on the expense side, this is the corresponding change that we see on that net to taxes. I don't know if there's a way to simplify that in an explanation, you know, for both the council, the school board, and the public that just dialed in. I think we can assume that nothing's gonna change on the revenue side in a positive way. So, obviously, there's two ways that that number moves. Either the net to taxes is as a result of a decrease in expenses, or it's a result of an increase in revenues. I think we're all pretty much in agreement that we're not likely to see an increase in revenues. So, just an understanding of, on sort of a step basis, oh, you know, if you reduce expenses by this much, this is what the net impact to taxes winds up being, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, is that something that we could possibly at least have some discussion around tomorrow night? I don't want to put you on the spot to do that right now necessarily, but.
No, no spot, no spot worry required, Mr. Chairman. Yes, the, that's one of those things that you look at consistently throughout the whole budget process is what the net impact is going to be to the taxpayers. And, you know, when it's all said and done, it comes down to being a big fraction. So if, you know, it sounds like what you're asking is really trying to give people a nuts and bolts understanding as to what the bottom line impact's gonna be on their tax dollar when we do go to commitment of taxes later in the summer. And at the start of the budget process, the anticipated growth in value, if you think about the big fraction, is, on the top of the fraction is the amount of money that needs to be raised for the town and the school to pay all of their bills. And on the bottom of that fraction is the overall municipal value. So looking at that pro forma, the bottom line, that shows what the anticipated town's taxable value is. At the start of the process, we were looking at an estimate of increase in value of $10 million. And looking at where we're at this point in time right now, I know we'll be booking at least $15 million. So that is an increase in, you know, in capacity that will be there. So that helps offset any increase in expenditures that both the town and the school may feel. So I'll have a better reflection of that for tomorrow night that I can, that I'd be happy to share with council as well as school board and other members of the public who tune in. But I'll be able to give you a pretty good impact as to where we're looking at, as well as some of the changes that, you know, may want to bring forward related to the, to the school, sorry, to the town budget as well at this point in time. Because, you know, there are anticipated efficiencies we are going to find due to the reductions that we've had this past six to seven weeks due to operating expenses that we were looking to try to book, to try to save some impact on next year's taxes as well. So, but no, that is something that I'll be fully anticipating and able to give a full nuts and bolts number. So you can say, okay, if the town takes off X amount of dollars and the school takes off X amount of dollars, you could be looking at a 1% or a 2% overall tax increase. Or if your anticipated goal is zero, I can give you kind of an idea as to how you can get to that point, at least from a leverage standpoint.
Well, I think what it would help us all to really have a better understanding, and I appreciate that, Matt, and look forward to seeing that. I think what it really will help us all to understand is when we hear from citizens that say, you know, in these times, and we've heard comments tonight and in our emails and things like that, that we just can't be thinking about, you know, increasing the amount that we're asking citizens to reach into their pockets and dig deeper and everything. And I totally understand that. I think, I think what we need to have a better understanding of is roughly, you know, and not getting into the details of, well, are we cutting this program, or are we cutting this, et cetera? I'm talking in more macro terms of, you know, what actually needs to reduce to get to that point.
Sure.
So that we have, we have something to discuss and at least be comparative around versus just, you know, throwing out a statement that says, "We just shouldn't increase anything." Because, I mean, one of the things is obviously, we're not in a position where even if you just roll over on both the municipal and school side last year's plan and say, "We're not gonna add any new, you know, any of these things that are accounted for in the chart that Elizabeth showed, that show, you know, the $728,951 of new ask," even if you didn't have any of that stuff on the school side or any of the things that you've asked for on the town side, you and your staff have asked for, it still doesn't cost the same this year or next fiscal year as it did this year to fund programs. So, I think we just have to have a little bit better understanding of what amount we'd actually be talking about reducing to in order to have that zero increase or as close to it as we think we might be able to get to, so.
Jamie, may I just quickly piggyback? Thank you for asking that question. And I like, I appreciate that you're asking Matt to do this because I think on the school board side, we have a pretty good understanding of what, you know, each percentage point in expenditure, you know, what does that corresponding actual dollar value do? And then that happens to go down to the school side tax impact. But, you know, the combined tax impact, I mean, it's a completely different number. It's a, the fraction that Matt talks about is something that the school board never deals with. And so, having an understanding of, you know, the sort of combined amount and how, you know, if we wanted to, you know, reduce that combined tax to the, you know, that's the municipal and school that goes to the taxpayer, I would love to hear about that from the town manager. So, thank you, Jamie.
No problem. Counselor Deveraux?
I agree. Thank you, Matt. I think that's really important for us to have those numbers. And I'd really like to thank the school board and the department heads for all the work they've done on this, and everyone who sent us texts, texts, who sent us emails, called, reached out. I think it's been really important for us to have your input and feedback in this process. One of the things I'm curious about, which I'd like to know, if you can talk about it tomorrow, Donna, is what is the school doing or thinking about doing to reduce operational expenses for this year? Are you furloughing people now? What does that look like and what are your plans now? And as Penny said, do you have a contingency plan? Are there other plans? Have you thought about if students are behind, they can repeat school, the school year next year? Have you thought about creative ways to work with that? And the idea about volunteers, I think volunteers are super important. We have so many people in this community that have so much to offer, whether it's tutoring or working in the classroom. I think it's a really great way to balance the dollars. And I don't feel like we're here to micromanage your budget, but I think that maybe we can all have a conversation and help work through it a little bit. But in the, but I'd really like to know what you're thinking of about those operational expenses now, what you can reduce, and what that may look like in September, if the kids don't come back to school in September. What, how would that help next year's budget? So I'd like to understand a little bit of that, too.
Jamie, I think you're on mute.
Thank you. Apologies for that. I was trying to say, is there any other questions or comments from counselors at this point? And I'm not seeing any. Elizabeth or Donna, is there any, or anybody else from the school board for that matter? Any other remarks that you wanted to offer at this time?
I'd just like to thank the town council again for hanging in there and for your thoughtful questions. And I think that Donna and the administrators and all of us appreciate that this was a really unusual year with an unusual presentation and your, you know, need to come back tomorrow night. And I think there's gonna be a need to come back again later. So, we appreciate the time given to do some research, and there, you know, probably won't be very specific and wonderful plans drawn up between tonight and tomorrow night, but I appreciate the opportunity for conversation. And this has been, and I hope will continue to be, a really positive collaborative process. So, thank you to town council.
You're welcome. So, with that, we'll segue. Oh, I'm sorry, I have the gallery view, and so I can't see. And I see Jeremy, your hand too, but Heather, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep, gotcha.
Yes. And I sort of would like to reiterate that as well. I have felt very supported this evening by the town council. The appreciation that was mentioned by everyone was definitely heard. And I think this whole process has been wonderful. I want to say thank you to Jamie earlier for making the comment of the questions that you have, for us not to take them personally, that they're not about the process, they're not about what we're doing. And I can just speak for myself, I heard that very loudly and clearly. And, you know, the questions are, I think we're all trying to do the best we can for the students, who, as Chris started the big conversation mentioning, like, are in a disastrous quote-unquote position right now. And, you know, also talking about their future lives are at stake. And also the conversation that we're having about how to balance that with responsibility to the taxpayers. So, I just want to say thank you for this conversation, for the mutual respect that feels like it is very palpable and present right now. And I just wanted to offer my gratitude.
Thanks, Heather. Jeremy, you had a comment?
Actually, I just wanted to ask a process question about tomorrow night.
Go ahead.
So, we have, my understanding is we have both a special meeting at 6:00 followed by a workshop at 7:00.
Correct.
And I just wanted, was curious, you know, how that works timing-wise, if the special meeting winds up taking, I guess if it winds up taking longer, we start the workshop when the special meeting ends. But I just wanted, in case people were interested in tuning in for one and not the other, make sure we kind of address that before we adjourn.
Yep, sure. Thank you. Appreciate that. So there are, in fact, two separate Zoom links for the individual meetings, two separate agendas, it's not all one big meeting. So thank you for pointing that out. So, just for clarity's purpose, the council will be meeting at 6:00 tomorrow night, the 28th, to convene in special session specifically regarding, you know, discussion and updates to some of the emergency measures, emergency actions and emergency orders that we had put in place previously, specifically in response to the emergency. Then, we are scheduled to meet at approximately 7:00. You know, Chairman Adams will be running the special meeting. I know that we'll obviously try to stay as close to that schedule as possible, but hope that folks that are specifically looking to tune in for the continuation of this budget discussion will, you know, grant us some forbearance and indulgence if some of the important discussion going on in the 6:00 meeting carries over. So, that's, I think the best we can do with that, we'll try and stick as close to schedule as possible, but also we'll have to end that meeting and start up the Zoom. And I know that Matt's got all the details, you know, to make sure we're on track with that. So, go ahead, Matt.
Thank you, sir. Yes, actually, there's only one Zoom identifier for the meeting tomorrow night, so it's anticipated. We'll roll right through, just trying to make it more efficient for the public to be able to just have a continuity. So, if someone wants to join in.
Sorry for that.
No, that's okay. Last week, we did do the separate, two separate meetings because of the executive session.
That's what I thought I had seen, first of all, so, okay.
Thank you.
All right, so ignore that. Makes it a little easier for folks, but, yeah, I mean, either way, we'll try and stick to as close to the schedule I know as we can. Any other counselors or anybody else on the panel with any questions or comments? No, sir?
Yeah, good evening. Jamie, thank you very much for the great conversation we've had so far. And I know a lot of people have put questions towards what's the future. None of us have the crystal ball for the future, but at some point, we have to make decisions. We are trying to budget for, again, something that's a moving target. So we do not know if the So we do not know if the pandemic will continue consistently for three months or periodically. So, for example, we started this a week or two, schools are closed, and then it continued for months. And so at some point, we need to make a decision if if scenarios. So for example, if you want to close the schools from the fall for six months, then yes, maybe we can take a decision and request teachers of other staff or ask Donna of other staff as well, tell the teachers to stay home longer and so forth. For the fact that it's a roller coaster unknown, it's not, it's go ups and downs. It's it's very tough for any of us to make a decision base and put money onto that as well. So my point is that if it was known that if we can, if we can make a decision now and saying that, okay, we're going to close the school for the whole year, then and we're going to do everything from homeschool, then we will know what how to work our budget. And we can say, okay, certain teachers are required, certain teachers are not required, people can collaborate. Now, if you if you say, okay, the school's going to be closed from fall for six months, then people can make a decision that way. But right now, we are, we are all anticipating hardship. But none of us are able to make a decision unless we make a decision without without the money, without money being involved in me taking the optional scenarios. So we have to identify some scenarios, some options, what if option one, option two, option three. I don't know if you understand my point, but if not, I think Elizabeth is my good translator. She can translate for me.
I think you did pretty well, No sir. I think you're you're echoing the chorus that it's hard, it's hard to. It is, I think your word is right. It's a roller coaster. We don't know. I think everybody would love to for the superintendent and the administrators to continue to work on different scenarios. And I I appreciate that we're going to be back and answer some questions tonight, but I don't know that we will have answers to all the questions. And to Jamie's point, we actually have a little release pressure valve by the fact that we don't have the validation until July. We do hope, we can hope that we do have some more answers. And we do have some time to work on those scenarios. Yes?
Okay, so decisions are being made tomorrow, basically. We have till July then, for more workshop, more discussion.
I just, I I mean, I I don't really believe, and I I don't think that the town council will and I'm somehow somehow I'm the finance chair speaking for the town council, but I don't know. That I don't believe the town council is going to be prepared to give guidance tomorrow night is my understanding. I think that we're going to have questions.
Well, yeah, I so I I think this serves as a good segue. And I'll speak for myself, not necessarily on behalf of the whole council, but what I expect tomorrow is that people will have had a chance to to really think about what was presented tonight in in a lot more, you know, thoughtful way and and go back and review some of the other materials that were all provided and formulate some questions. And and I think Matt and as as I had asked for, you know, we'll be able to at least paint some scenarios for us. The, you know, if we do X, this is what that means. This is what impact would be achieved from that. And then, I mean, I would expect that coming out of tomorrow, there'll be some direction. Maybe not a consensus decision, but some direction on on which way we think we need to head with this. And I think, like, like has been said, it stated, and just to reiterate, that the the fact that, you know, we'll we'll likely be in a position of pushing out the the schedule by about 30 to 40 days or so. You know, gives us a little bit of breathing room to run some more scenarios if we need be, have some further discussion to weigh impact, to weigh, you know, the, you know, additional information that may or may not come in. You know, we may know in in two or three weeks' time what that state revenue picture is going to look like, what that impact is going to be, and be able to not guess it at that scenario, but but have a much more concrete answer as to what that reality will be, for example. So in fact, I mean, Matt, one of the things that came up last Thursday in the GP COG call that I referenced earlier was that the April revenue share hadn't come in yet and was three days late. I don't know if, I don't know if either you or John can, has that has that come in yet? Are we still waiting on that from the state? Because one thing that was alluded to was the fact that, you know, if you see your April number come in a lot lower than you had forecast, you have a good idea of which way the wind is blowing. So.
Yes, the April numbers did come in last week.
And?
Yes, it was lower than we expected.
Yeah. So, you know, that's that's the kind of additional incremental data that we'll be able to add to our scenarios to have. Again, what what I've said to a few people that, you know, is is obviously the most difficult and certainly the most frustrating aspect of the position we find ourselves in, aside from obviously the public health crisis, you know, first and foremost, is that we as leaders of the of the two bodies here are in a position of having to, you know, make concrete decisions with, you know, very incomplete, at best, information about what the future picture will look like. So, you know, the 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 more we can remove the variables, you know, and and again, maybe 30 to 40 days' time, you know, will give us, at least in some areas, a slightly clearer picture of that. I think the better off will be for some of the decisions we have to make. But, you know, to go back to the point I was making, I think, I think tomorrow, coming out of tomorrow's meeting, I would expect that there'll at the very least be some some degree of direction from which, you know, we we go down a path to further work together. So that's number one. So seeing no other hands raised from members of the council or school board, is there anybody that's still with us from the public that wants to add any questions or public comment at this time? Again, we will be meeting tomorrow, be opportunity both prior to the meeting as well as the conclusion of the meeting for public comment tomorrow. But if you, if you have any comment now, I'm more than willing to take that again. If you could just give us your name, your address, and try and keep your comments to three minutes, that'd be great. So Rosemary Townsend, your hand is raised again. So once Matt gets you queued up, we'll hear from you in just a second.
Now, can you hear me?
Got it. Go ahead. Yep.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much, especially Elizabeth and Jamie, for information you have shared. I want to just kind of jump on Penny Jordan's comment a little bit with one idea is that I'm not sure what classes are offered in the high school anymore other than, you know, if we look at our schools as the gold standard, you know, if we look at the basics of, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic, to be simplistic. Maybe we can go back to the core classes that we absolutely have to have and then look at some of the others that might be, you know, like last year, I think there was a photography class. Maybe that's something that we don't offer this year, if we do even. Those types of things, so that those teacher resources that are used used there can maybe be attributed someplace else. And then the other thing I was going to comment on is there are a lot of comparisons of our school district versus other gold standard school districts. Have we checked in with them since the COVID episodes to see how they may be dealing with it with their schools? And what might they be thinking of next year? So that we stay in line with that type of a school thinking. And I also agree with Penny in terms of volunteers. I mean, I think there are probably a lot of things in the school that could be done by volunteers and also probably by some of the many unemployed people next year. Thank you. That's all. And I appreciate all the work you guys have done. A masterful job. There's no doubt about it. But again, I mean, this is like a tsunami has come and it's going to hit the state. It's going to hit everybody. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I see Ruth Ann Haley's hand raised. So Matt, once you queue her up, go ahead, Ruth.
Hi, good evening.
Yep.
First of all, thank you for your service. I greatly appreciate and I understand the commitment that you have had to this community. And Elizabeth, you did a great job justifying the work that you have done. And I understand that you want the best for the students in Cape Elizabeth. Having said that, here's my big butt. What I would like you to do is think about what we do in our house. What do you absolutely need versus what's on your want list? And so as you're thinking about sort of the variables that are before us with the labor market and the economy and the stability of our community, which may not be so stable if people are losing their jobs and can't pay for their mortgages and things might change. You know, the sands are moving and we really can't make decisions. But what we can do is make a list of what we absolutely have to have and then make a list of what we would like to have and then prioritize those things. So I hope you think about that as you move forward. I know there's a lot of variables that we don't know. But if we make a list of what we absolutely need in every classroom with every teacher, like Penny said, you know, the teachers that are with the students are the most valuable. And the one thing I do know about teachers, they are very creative. So if you go back and talk to your departments and say, if you really had to make changes just for a short time, what can you think of that we can do differently and still provide a wonderful experience socially and academically? Thank you very much.
Hi, this is Rob Hubs. It's not Susannah.
Rob, hold on just a second. I again was talking to mute. Ruth Ann, if you're still there, if you don't mind just sharing your address with us, because we didn't catch that earlier.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
I live at 49 Brentwood Road.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Now over to Rob. Go ahead, Rob Hubs, and your address, please.
18 Bellfield Road. Thank you. Yeah, no, I I just think that the 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 schools are really in a in a in a tough position in terms of being to being able to deliver excellence on, you know, what comparatively is a very low amount of money. And it's a, it's a huge asset to the town. And I know that everything seems very scary night right now, but I'm very confident that the that the economy will improve and that that and that Cape Elizabeth will be right in the middle of that. So I think that the the ask by our school system, considering its value to the town, is is very modest and I fully support it. It's barely above the price of inflation. And we should realize its its value. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands raised. Is there anybody else that wishes to offer a public comment at this point? Okay, so seeing none. I again just want to thank everybody from the school board and the school department, town council as well, and for all the public participation. You know, I have to say one thing that has been a pleasant byproduct of this whole situation is I think we've had really good public engagement through this meeting format. And I appreciate people's patience with the technology platform and encourage people to keep keep coming out and participating. I want to thank everybody who offered emails, calls in advance of the meeting and who I assume will continue to do so as we work our way through this prior process. I know that council reads all of them and considers them very thoughtfully. And we appreciate you all taking the time to to share your opinions and put forward your ideas. It's very helpful for us in terms of understanding sentiment and and we encourage you to keep doing that. And the last thing I'll say is just a note of of empathy, really, for everybody in our community. We've heard here from a few people tonight who have had very real and direct impacts that have come from this situation. And I know, I I think I can confidently speak for not only the council, but everybody that's participating here tonight to to say that, you know, the community really does feel a tremendous amount of empathy for anybody that has been so directly impacted. And, you know, I think one thing that that I have faith in is, you know, that as we go through things like this, we do so with a sense of togetherness, community purpose that, you know, that I hope will continue to shine and and hopefully be a light at the end of the tunnel that we're all sort of traversing through at the moment. So for anybody that that has been, you know, really adversely impacted, I also just want to remind folks of, you know, the different services that the town is trying to provide and connect people to, whether it be, you know, you know, various forms of social service relief or other kinds of community services. One of the things we just did was get the hotline going this past week and appreciative of of Matt and Kathy Raffus and the efforts they're putting in there. But the town is really looking to to be, you know, a connector for folks. And and if there's help that can be offered, we're trying to stand ready to do that. So I want to encourage people to take advantage of that if they if they feel the need. So with that, we'll reconvene again tomorrow, again, following the the special session meeting at 6:00. So look for you right back here tomorrow night. And thank you all again, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Good night.
Take care, guys.